Start doing the background checks and you start doing the, you know, people start dropping out of the process and all, you don't want to be down to, you know, to two or three to try to make a choice. So that's, that's why, well, well, once you get the material, you can look and you can may, maybe you may say, we only want to look at four. I'm hoping for God's sake, you don't say you want to look at eight.
Okay, alright.
It's not only, yeah, it is, it would be a lot of...
The temperature in this room is not its usual way because they're working on the system and so they can, they get warmer, but they can't make it cooler and we find that when we're in here, then we tend to get a little warm. That was the last time we were in this meeting, when we were doing the phone interviews.
Uh-huh.
It was really warm. Sorry for the interruption.
No, no, no problem. Okay, and then, so you get the notebook on the 16th, June 16th. The 23rd, we will meet. You will have had an opportunity to review all of the material, then we'll come together and we will decide on which candidates we want to call in for the interview. Now, since you're going to be meeting as a entire body, you can definitely expect you're going to have people here, you know. We also are, you know, we, we have to operate under the open meetings act. Yeah, okay.
I, I think, and if I may just interrupt, and I didn't mean to interrupt here, but I, I think that as long as we, as long as the candidates have requested the confidentiality, until we get to the interviewing stage, we could do that in a closed session and, and narrow those persons down. Again, once you're to the interviewing stage, certainly that's all public information, but it is possible to do in a closed session to do the narrowing down under the open meetings act.
Correct.
Which is part of their paperwork has to be, I request this is private.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you will see at the very bottom of the job announcement, we have on it, we have that and we'll be putting that in. And one of the ways, Lori, that, another way that we may want to handle that, I, I don't have any problems with that closed session, I think that works well, but another way would be that you would have, I would give you all of the information, you will have the names of the candidates and everything else, but when we start talking about the candidates and narrow them down, I would ask you to list your top five and then we would say, and, and the notebooks that I give you, I'll have candidates A through such and such, and then you wouldn't give me any names, you, we would just say that candidate A is our first choice, how many votes does candidate A get, how many votes does candidate B get, and that type of thing. And then, once we narrow it to those five, then what we would do is, I would immediately call those individuals, let them know that they've been selected as a finalist, and at this point in time, everything, once they say they want to proceed in the process, that everything is open to the public at that point. And that'll be, you know, once they, but I think our, we would make that phone call to them first to make sure. And I would have already had, with all those 15, the top candidates I give you, I will have conducted an in-depth telephone interview with them. And all of that will be explained to them. Plus, every candidate that applies, I will either tell them that they qualify or they don't qualify. The ones that qualify will get a copy of the entire key activities and dates, so they will know what the process is up front. Okay?
Now, are these, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Rob.
I have questions from previous...
What, the dates?
Well, no, I've got all kinds of date questions. This is a process question and I want to make sure I understood you properly. You give us 12 to 15 that you feel are the highest qualified candidates, final, or final candidates from which we should choose up to five for the interview. Did I hear you say that then we would each take those 15, read them, and then rank our top five?
No, 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 no. Once we, we would say, these are our top, I would give you what I consider to be the top 15, okay? And then, everyone would get those notebooks, you would review them, then we would meet, we'd come together, and out of that 15, we would say, these are the five that we want to go forward.
But that would be done through dialogue around this?
Correct, yes, yeah, yeah.
In, in a closed session.
Right, yeah, yeah. You see, I, I don't think that my role should be to come in and dictate to you who the five should be.
Oh, absolutely.
We want as much input into this as possible, so that we can come up with, out of that 15, this person, all of them, all of those 15 are going to meet the minimum requirements, okay? But then it is determining who is the best fit for this position at this point in time. And, you know, that will be done in joint session. Okay? Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, Rob, did, did you have any other questions?
I have no.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Because I may be answered as we go.
Okay, and please, please, please do. Okay, so that'll be the 23rd. Now, please, you've got this, before you, these dates, put them on your calendar, okay?
Well, we'll discuss these.
Yeah, okay.
We have to discuss it first.
Okay, alright, good enough. But let, let me run through it and then we can change the dates if you need to, okay? But once we leave here today and, and you agree to this, then that's what we'll be working Okay, once we identify, we've identified the five candidates, the very next day, I will get with those five, let them know that they have been selected. I will tell them that, at this point in time, it becomes public, okay? Then I will also tell them that they will be getting a packet of material, and in the material that they're going to receive, it's going to include, remember when I was talking about the questions I'm going to be asking you, the questions I'm going to be asking the employees, the questions from the public, et cetera? They will get that, I will consolidate it.
I have a question about that, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
You said that you would, you would segment that as to, these are the concerns of council, these are the concerns of the employees, these are the concerns of the citizens. And I've never heard of that being done before, that way. I've always heard of a general amalgamation. And, and so I'm, I'm wondering what the advantage is in sourcing those concerns to the candidate.
Sometimes a candidate will want to know, where did it come from, you know, when they're preparing their written plan of action? Was this comment from a, I've done it both ways, so I, I really do not have a preference. If your preference is to take it, matter of fact, that would be easier for them.
My, I will be real honest with you, and I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel, but I, I have some angst with segmenting it out. Particularly, I want an honest answer from these candidates, I don't want them to answer council's concerns with more credibility than the concerns of the citizens that we honestly represent, nor the employees that they have to work with. And, and I also think that while none of us try to do that, the person we hire will spend the first six weeks trying to figure out who said that, that he had to or she had to deal with. And, and so I, I don't want to see ourselves be open to that. I would prefer that it be a natural amalgamation of, these are the general concerns of the community, the issues that this new city manager will have to address.
Hi, yes.
My two cents.
Um, and, thank you. I, well, you keep calling it the concerns, but I'm wondering if it's these questions driven, because the questions I looked at carefully when we received them, and that's, these are different than if you said, well, what are your concerns? So is there part of the open dialogue where you say specifically the concerns? Because that's not, you know, what we, or are you talking to...
It's easier to say what you don't want often than what you do want.
Or, or what?
Well, I'm just asking the question. So what I'm, Charles, my question is, it's really the answers to these questions.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's the questionnaires, it's not the general concerns?
Right.
Because I, probably my concerns might not even...
I still don't think they need to be sourced separately.
I, I moved on from there, to what you're talking about, the general concerns, because I don't see this as a concern sheet.
Yeah, and then another, another benefit of, of having them all at once, you know, all as one category, is that sometimes you only get a few responses and, so, yeah, that 's fine. I don't have any problem. Like I said, it's easier for me to do them all at once and put them in there, you know. But it's just the candidates, when they get it, and I could see your, you know, the issue at that point, okay, yeah, alright, that's good.
Also tied into that same point, is what happens if we have different, I mean, opposing opinions?
But then, if, if I were the guy, if I were the person coming in here, the first thing I would want to know is, this council or people that's going to be doing my evaluations and all, you are a committee of seven. I would want to know what, and, well, that should be the first thing we ask the candidates, one of the questions, what are you going to do the first, your first 30 days on the job? How are you going to go about doing that? First thing I would be doing is sitting down with you as a group and individuals and finding out, you know, what are the major issues that need to be addressed? And hopefully, all of you will be saying the same thing.
Oh, no.
No, on major issues, on major issues, yeah, okay, alright. Okay, but, are, are we clear on that one then? Okay, so we'll, okay.
I, one, one thing that I'm going to need from our city clerk is that July council meetings are not listed in our agenda, they go up through July 6th, and it would be helpful to have those dates, because if we're going to jive the schedule that he wants to do with council meetings, the kind of work schedules and et cetera. Do you have those two dates for July? Could you get them?
Got it.
You knew for July?
6th and 20th, maybe they're wrong, but I got 6th and 20th.
6th and 20th, okay, thank you.
I tried to stay away from Mondays in most cases.
Well, Monday...
Actually, Monday, we kind of island.
Yeah, Monday the 20th is a council meeting date, so that's right.
Well, that one, that was one exception. That one was where we made the public hearing, so I wanted to make sure that I had it, that one. But all the others, I think, should not be Mondays.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you. That's right, I did hit my calendar for the, thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay, so on July 7th, we will, I would expect the written responses from those candidates. I will take that and email it to you. So the five people coming in, you will have their written plan of action. Oh, and also, they're not only going to get just that survey, they're going to get a copy of your budget, they're going to get a copy of your audit report, the audit letter, they'll get copies of that, and they'll have that to review as well, when they develop their plan of action. Within the letter that I write to them, I will tell them that we'll be looking at, we don't want any more than 10 typewritten pages. Matter of fact, the best ones I've found are the ones that can do it in, in four or five, you know. But we have to put a limit to it, okay? I don't think you want to be reading all of that, anyway. But anyway, we will also, and we'll tell them that we are going to be evaluating on how concise they are, how comprehensive their report is, clarity, that type of thing, and the substance, of course, okay? Okay, then, oh, also, once we have identified the finalists, I will immediately send them an authorization form, an authorization form to begin conducting the background investigation. The background investigation will consist of criminal report, a credit report, bankruptcy report, education verification, employment verification of not their current job, but the one prior to that, because some of them want their bosses to know until they have an opportunity to tell them, and I think we need to honor that. Also, we will be asking for or doing a driving record search, and the criminal and the sub investigation goes back for a period of seven years. Bankruptcy is like 10 years. And then there's one other report that we will do. And of all of those that I've mentioned before, all of those elements, the one that I found to be the best of all is newspaper article search. In essence, if there's anything negative in their background, we want to know about it, we want to know it before we make any hiring decisions, okay? You will have all of that information before we conduct the interviews. So the process is built that way, that we'll have that. What you will not have all of the information on will be the reference checks, because the reference checks will be one of the last things that, that we're going to do. But usually when I find that people have, we have problems, it's usually in the background, okay?
Charles?
Yes.
I may have gotten lost in there. Are you saying for the 15?
No, 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 no. We're past the 15. It's, it's the five.
So I just want to clarify, and this is the $500 fee?
Correct.
It's, you had officially, so we're talking about that for five?
Right, and it's the best $500 you can, you can pay. If you did that, the worst thing that could happen is to hire someone and then find out that you've got that problem. So it's best to do it upfront. I always suggest do it on all five. If you wanted to wait until you hired someone and didn't do that, the problem you run into there is that the person that you may wind up saying that this is the person you want, you've got the problem. And I'll tell you through experience, I always strongly recommend that you do that. Had an example of, well, capital region, we don't have any reporters, capital...
We are on tape. And it, there's, it's no, it's not necessary. Every, every firm we looked at did this. I just wanted to clarify that it was $500 and it's those five. That's all. We don't need to go there.
Good enough, okay.
But we are being cast.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, but anyway, that's, that's what we'll do, is that background and the rest of it. And then, on the 7th, well, I've already mentioned the 7th, that's when we get the, the report back to us. On the 8th or the 9th, whichever day were best for you, we will then meet, and oh, another thing, part of the process that I built in and I'm hoping, well, I'll just lay this out to you, and many, many jurisdictions that I've worked with are doing this. And that is, having another panel, that role of that advisory panel is, they will be interviewing the candidates as well. I will meet with the advisory panel and that...
We don't, we don't do that kind of thing in Troy, it's always the, the seven of us. We have boards and committees that handle certain areas of, like traffic committee and CBA and that, but, but in order for us to have some kind of, set up an advisory panel, we'd be way out of our timeframe for one thing, and second thing is, it couples in our jurisdiction.
Okay.
So I'm sorry to have to correct you.
Alright.
We could if we wanted to, but I don't know. I don't know that we want to, but we could if we wanted to.
Could I, could I lay out, you know, how, how it would work and then, you know, if you, if you say you don't want it, that's fine, okay? Is that, is that the sentiment?
I, I'm not comfortable doing that, I'd rather keep it here.
Okay. Good enough.
This is your committee, we work...
This is your advisory panel, this is your council, this is your...
Yeah.
One hand, shall we?
Good enough, alright, simplify it. It, it simplifies it, but I just think it's good, you get as much input as you can.
But we'll get that input through that meeting with the public, and then it looks like you have a time when they can actually meet.
Correct, yeah.
And meet, greet, so we'll have that. But to have a, a panel, an official, that lends itself to them making these recommendations and then we don't take that, it just creates...
Okay, alright. Okay, then the next process is that we would have, we invite the five finalists in for a public forum meeting. And at that public forum, the way it would run would be, the chair would start it off, we started at, I, I say 5:15, we have had it 5:30, we have had it where it started at 6, but you would set that time, it would usually be an hour and a half. 15 minutes into the process, the chair will call it to order, and then it's an informal meet and greet session is what it is. Each of the candidates will have five minutes to introduce themselves, tell a little about their background, why they're interested in a position, that type of thing. And they will do that before the entire audience. When the public comes in, or when any of the employees comes in, come in, they will be given a comment card. And on that comment card, there'll be all of the five candidates' names, you know, and there'll be space where they can write. And then, they'll be handed those and they could fill them out. And at the end of the meeting, we would take that, I would take that, and then consolidate that. And that's just anecdotal information that you're going to be getting, okay? And then, the next day would be your interviews. And, and that would be the process up to there. And then, since we don't have those panels and everything, you could probably make a decision before that, July 21st to 28th. Could we just take maybe a five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we take off?
Oh, thank, thank.
This is your rich room.
Oh. And... Go ahead.
Yep. So, do we want to look and see if there's any conflict with the dates? Is that what you want to know?
Kim, go ahead, Rob, go ahead. I'll, I'll tell you. Charles, I have, I have a huge concern about waiting till, we only have seven days left to make an offer to somebody. I think that's cutting it very close. The charter says we must have a contract signed by the 28th of, it's 28th of July, right?
128, so it would be from the 31st.
From March 31st, so, yeah, that's, that's the 28th of July. And if, for whatever reason, our first choice would tell us no, we don't have it up to time. And we will be in violation of our charter and there is no reason at this point to set ourselves up where that could happen. So I think we need to allow ourselves two weeks at the end of that process and, and move everything forward accordingly.
That can be done. This, what I've laid out, is 104 days, okay, from this, but I started from the 16th to the 28th, 104...
Yeah, but that was two weeks into the...
Yeah, but that's plus 16, so that's 120.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah.
We don't get 120 from our first meeting with you, we get 120 from midnight on the 1st of April.
Yeah.
Alright, we can try, well, we can not try, I guess we have to move it back some then. What I, what, the part that, for the integrity of the process, that, the period that we have for receiving the resumes in is critical. I, I, I don't want to compromise on that, you know, because that, so, anything else in here, I'm willing to do. Since you don't have the advisory committee and all, that may make it easier, let's, let's take a look at it. But let's do this first, we could, let's look at the dates that we have and see if anyone has any problems with those dates, and then we could look at where we could cut back on it.
Can we identify first the actual meeting dates you have? Because a lot of these dates are more about the process. As I read this, it looks like the first time that you would meet with the council... As I read this, it looks like the first time that you would meet with the council again would be June twenty third. Am I reading that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, if we could just, uh, kind of sift through here, the actual meeting dates, uh, again, are we July eighth or ninth, meet with interview panels?
Correct.
Okay, so that's our next time of meeting. And then, the fourteenth and fifteenth would be, as you have it here, the, uh, public forum and our interviews. And then, the twentieth is, uh, where you, and, and, I mean, we know this has to be changed, but I'm just trying to identify the actual. So, we're looking for us to meet one, two, three, four-ish meetings.
Two, three, four, actually five.
Well, you've got July fourteen and fifteen, public meeting.
I have the twenty third, right? Okay. I have the eighth or ninth.
Right.
Right? I have the, um.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Yeah, fourteen and fifteen. I, I, I consider those as one.
Okay.
And then, I have, um, the twentieth.
Five including tonight.
And then, I have the, the twenty first, twenty eighth.
Make offer to hire, okay, that's right, we'd have to.
I see where we could already cut time up now is, that fourteenth, fifteenth. Um, that's where we're gonna have that, that interview process and everything else. See, the reason that that time was, that four day time period was in there was so that you'd be getting the information from the advisory panel and all of that. Since we don't have to do that, we could probably have it where, um, uh, the deliberation could probably take place, uh, a little sooner. Does, does that make sense to everyone?
May I?
Mm-hmm, yes, go ahead.
So I'm reading this as July eighth and ninth is not necessary, or eighth or ninth, uh, because you're meeting with the council and the advisory panel, which isn't going to exist, to conduct like an imme-.
Oh, no, no. That one is very important.
So you would meet with us.
Meet with you. And the purpose for that meeting is twofold. One is, um, we're gonna go through a little interview training. And then, second, we're going to identify a set of structured oral interview questions. And we'll be asking all of the candidates the same identical questions, okay? And so, it'd be to develop a set of job-related interview questions, so that one is important. But we only need one day of it. And that's only two and a half hours, okay? Or probably two hours, that we would have to meet that day. And that one, um, has to be a closed session, cause that's where we're developing those interview questions, okay? You follow?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So. So what we could do, i- i- if we said we met on the fourteenth, we could probably meet, uh, no later than the sixteenth for your deliberation.
Would you like to see us do the interviews on a weekend?
On a weekend?
Yeah, so that the people have it easier to get out of, off work, and so residents are more likely to have time. And so that a lot of council members are much more available on a weekend, right?
Actually not. I, some.
Actually not. Two out of the, two out of four Saturdays in July, I'm like. But, some of that will work with you.
Okay.
I, I, I am willing to do that, I understand that. It's difficult to do, if, if we buy into your schedule, and I'll be real honest with you, we have a council meeting the night of the sixth of July. You wanna meet with us then again on the eighth or the ninth, and the next week, we would be giving the city of Troy our lives for three nights in a row. And while we all are good public servants and, and wanna participate in the process, I think, maybe we do need to think about a long day somewhere, or some other way to do this.
Another option for you, and I'll just throw this one out. Depends on how much you're gonna have on that meeting on the sixth, is that we may tie that in before you have your regular public meeting.
If you wanna do your interview training, like, piggyback on the front or the back end of that, you said that would take how long though?
Uh, the whole process, if everyone does their homework.
We're pretty good on that.
Okay, if e- e- if each of you.
We saw that.
Each of you come prepared with about three, maybe four interview questions, job-related interview questions. That's gonna make it go, go a whole lot easier. But I still want you to attend that interview training. Everybody think they know how to interview. And I just wanna make sure that we've got that.
But we could do that on the sixth, we're already here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, yeah.
We have meetings till two AM.
I'm not gonna do those anymore, I'm not even gonna want anymore, we're gonna be done earlier, right Jen, see?
You know, that's not up to me.
Lansing City Council had one two weeks ago, dealing with an issue of, uh, removing a liquor license. Started at five o'clock, it ended at five o'clock the next morning.
How many are on there?
I would be whole.
Nine, nine, but that was, they, they had, they actually had lawyers there, and they had, you know, witnesses and all of that.
Most lawyers you have.
Yeah.
We know.
Okay, but I, I, I shouldn't have brought that up.
We only have one.
One attorney, and she's very confident. Most of the time.
That would get her in court.
Okay, so we're, we're saying the sixth.
So some of us could do that as part of the sixth.
Okay, let's do that sixth then.
If we can piggyback some of our council meetings anyway, because we have, we get our council meeting scheduled way ahead of time, this is the summer, and, you know, you kinda work around those days, and so.
No, I, that, that's fine with me, and if you see anyplace else that you wanna do that, I don't have any problem.
Okay, so this is.
Well, some of those dates aren't gonna affect us, because we don't have to be there, so those.
Well. Yeah, okay.
This period of time after the fourth of July is very high likelihood of me having to go out west for testing with our companies.
With your job.
Yeah. So as much as we can consolidate this period of time, the better.
Okay, yeah. As long as, like I said before, the one that I'm gonna be a stick around is.
Yeah, we need the time to gather the people.
For the candidate, to, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Cause we don't wanna, we wanna cast as broad a net as possible, and make sure we come up with a good pool.
So July fourteenth and fifteenth, that, that very next week, you have, uh, two, two days set aside for interviews, right?
So those are solid days. Actually, but we aren't.
No, 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 we, we, we could do that if we have, um, the public forum, they come into town that night before, okay? Or that day before. Have the public forum, let's say on the fourteenth, you, yeah, you would have to, you should be there for public forum, because.
Yeah, why should we?
Yeah, yeah, right. But, but, but you're, you're, yeah, that's right, that's where you get to see them, uh, stand on their feet and give a presentation. Everyone else get to come up and meet them, you know? Meet and greet session. Then, the next day is your interviews, are your interviews.
So we actually.
And tha- tha- that's gonna be a full, you know, if you have five candidates, that's gonna be approximately a full day, okay? All right.
So a couple of you've gotta take off work to do that. Well, I don't know.
Vacation news.
I mean, but, it's a concern.
Well, my, yeah, my sister's getting here in that timeframe too, so.
So what, where is that?
It's, I don't know what my requirements are, but I think it's on the, that Saturday, what is it?
The eighteenth, the twelfth, I mean.
Twelfth, yeah.
The twelfth, okay, so we should move it maybe. Well, we should be back by the fourteenth.
They'll have a reason.
Yeah, I, I obviously why wouldn't be, yeah, I'd bring it back.
You don't do it the week after, you're, you're, you're getting too close to the decision.
Right.
What's D day, what is the, what's the?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth? Twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth.
See, I wanna be done, two weeks ahead of that, I really wanna be done.
How can you do, you can't, because we're doing it here.
Well, we can be done by now.
Well, if we're try, if we're trained on the sixth, why can't we do it?
The interview on the fourteenth?
Yes, that's definitely possible.
Why can't we do it the same week, and then we get out two weeks?
Yeah, yeah, that's, the thirteenth is, what, what day is the thirteenth?
Monday.
Monday?
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, most of the time that I have this is, I usually set it up on a Monday, you know? But I wasn't doing that because of your, well, anyway, the thirteenth, yeah, yeah.
Can, can I throw something out? Since the sixth is a council meeting, and, um, then we would be trained for the interview.
Right.
If we did the, uh, public forum and the interviews that same week, we'd be real fresh, like the eighth and the ninth. We're gonna be trained on the sixth, we've got the questions going, we do it the eighth and the ninth. And that gives us that, that full two weeks for deliberation, or, you know, for, before you have to make that decision.
On the twenty, make the decision on the twenty.
Right.
No, 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 that's not right.
No.
I wanna make the decision right after my interview, the fourteenth.
But, but let, let, let's follow.
But if we get it all in one week.
You're saying have the, okay, the sixth we're gonna be meeting. And we're gonna be getting developing, training and developing interview questions, so we have that ready. Then the only other thing is the public forum, and if I follow what you're saying is, why don't we do that the same week?
Yeah, the eighth, the Wednesday, and do our interviews on the ninth, this would avoid the wedding, the week of the wedding.
Okay, so.
Actually, it's the Thursday before, it may interfere more than during the following. The following week after the wedding, everything will be done before the week, the wedding, they're gonna have rehearsal dinner.
But you're heading into a deliberation, like, that's, that's.
Well, see, like, I don't think we wanna stew or let the candidates stew for a week or ten days, I think we wanna meet the next day.
And, but you wanna get time to say.
Yeah.
If they say no, so.
Cause they're gonna want three days to think about it.
So you meet that week, and then you make your decision, you put the offer out, and then you still have a heading as to what's gonna happen.
So we're saying, then, the sixth, we've set aside. And then sometime, if I follow what you're saying, sometimes doing that week, we have the public forum and we have the interviews. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Martin, so one question.
Martin, how are you doing on?
He's gotta cross the country, and he's gotta be here for rehearsal there on Friday.
No, I'm, I'm just a pencil maker, so. I, I don't think any of that, that's, as long as it's not on the live, I think we'll be all right.
So, the eighth and the ninth, who are we looking at?
Yeah.
Running the process.
Well, yeah, the public forum.
Yeah, the ones that were July fourteenth, fifteenth, right?
So, so the public forum on the eighth and interviews the ninth, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, everyone feel comfortable with that? Okay, all right.
And I guess this would be a question for the mayor and for John. Before, as we've had candidates in, we've, we've taken a couple hours on the bus and given them a little tour of town, and some of the facilities, that's not on the schedule, because it has nothing to do with you. But, do we wanna plan that in again? And if we do, then Charles needs to know that, so that when he schedules the candidates for their interviews, he needs them all here by this time.
For the day of the public forum, that's if you're on the evening, it's late.
So that would be a good thing for the daytime, sometime after lunch.
Quite often, that's what occurs, um, you know, um, I know when I did for the Board of Ward and Light, that's, that's what happened. You just have to set up a schedule and sign people to take them around, but they, they need to be available there that night though.
Oh, yeah.
And they know that upfront, okay, all right.
That's a good point, Robin, I think that's pretty universal where the candidates be flown in early morning on a Thursday, if you will. And then there's a department assigned to that candidate to show him or her around the entire city, uh, facilities and so forth. And then, as Charles said, in the evening, then there's a city manager beauty contest, if you will, to meet that person, and their sponsor, just. And then the interviews pop.
The next day?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, no.
I like that schedule.
Yeah, I do too, I just.
It gives us that padding.
We need to.
Right, okay, so then, is that?
Nine in time.
No, eight, nine.
So eight, nine, so what does that do to the other dates now, for the July twentieth?
It throws them all away.
That's council anyway, that's council meeting.
But I think we deliberate at the ninth, don't we? You don't wanna wait eleven days to deliberate.
No, after the interviews, uh.
What, what did you say?
No, no, I wanna sleep on it.
Cause each interview, it's gonna be an hour and fifteen minutes.
Yeah, not the same day that you do the interview, please, yeah. Take, take a day or two to, yeah, and then get together and make your, make your decision.
How about the thirteenth?
I can live with that, it'd be good.
Monday, the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the original date.
The twentieth?
I don't, no. That leaves us only a week to make a decision.
Well, we should be able to make a decision that night.
Well, we can, but can they? Oh, no, this, this, I don't wanna be that close, I really don't. The thirteen. Cause we offer it, and they think about it themselves, Martin.
They will know all throughout the process, the good part, uh, Martin, about having this out there, is that they'll know what the dates are, what's expected. I will reinforce that when I have my interviews with them, and when we narrow it down to that fi- that five. And then, I'll also reinforce it when I call them and tell them that they're one of the final five. Now, what's gonna be driving it for most of them, is once we narrow it down to that five, at that point, they're gonna be scrambling to let their bosses know. If they already have them, you know? If they're smart, they'd do that before the news, well, yeah, 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 okay.
Because, um, really, on the thirteenth, should we make a decision, then the offer is made, and then negotiations come, and when they find out they'll only be working for one dollar, they may not decide if they want.
I found us a dollar fifty now.
Okay, so we're saying the thirteenth then would be the date of the, uh, the final, make the final offer.
And then that gives a padding.
Yeah, yeah, that gives deliberation time for the other side, and negotiate.
But we're, so, we got them.
We have to, uh, right, we have to set the, um, council meeting calendars too. That's why I said, for us to get all these dates set tonight, so that they can be posted.
Okay, let, can I run, no, did someone else have a question?
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes.
June fifteenth, we have a council meeting, and you've got June twenty third to, um, meet and review the material and agree on the finalists, the five or so. It, would it, would it be, since we already have a council meeting, that on the fifteenth, could we not do it on the fifteenth? Or does that cut into your time too much?
What, June, you say?
June, yes.
No, the only thing, June is June sixteenth, that's what.
No, you have June twenty third.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's when we, that's when we need to determine who the five finalists are, right?
Correct. And we have a council meeting on the fifteenth, I was just, that was, that's an additional meeting that very next week, is what I'm saying. So, could we do that on the fifteenth?
We won't have the notebooks.
You won't have the notebooks, not until the sixteenth, yeah.
We could get the notebooks at our council meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay.
That would say, I mean.
I, yeah, okay, if you say, if you say one day, fine, okay, fifteenth we can do.
Because that gives you, I think, time to do your deliberation, or your checks that you have to do. But we have an automatic distribution that night, so.
Fifteenth is fine, yeah, okay, I can get the notebooks to you on the fifteenth.
On the twenty second, or do we want?
Twenty second would be better. The twenty second for me is better.
Oh, Mondays are.
Mondays are always better, when we get into the week, if we have.
So instead of twenty third to twenty second? Okay, okay, all right.
Well, I guess my overall concern is, I would like to see if we can streamline this a tad bit more, this is, this is an awful lot of meetings. I don't mind putting a time in, but it's, it's a matter of, of, you know, being able to make it, and, and, uh, that's what I'm talking about the process.
You know what, though? This follows what he submitted, and his, you recommended this, and this follows exactly what he suggested on his original.
Yeah, those were like, addressed the issue that I stated here, I would like to see us, um, if we're trying to move, move up the process, I guess I'd like to see if we can streamline what happens after the, uh, I believe it's the twenty ninth, and, and we're still out to, what is it? Perfect, we're still running, yeah.
What I count here, Martin, is, um, additional meetings, meetings that we don't have scheduled. Is the June twenty second, and we're gonna, we're gonna do the training when we meet anyway. And then the public forum, which can never, can't be on a timeline of, uh, you know, can't be the time we meet in, for a regular meeting. So, we have the June twenty second, July eighth and ninth, and then make the decision on the thirteenth. So we have four meetings that aren't normally scheduled.
So July sixth, I have that down for something.
That's our council meeting, yeah, that's our council meeting anyway, but we would have the interview.
My code is off, excuse me. My code is off, excuse me.
So we really have just four additional meetings and two of those of the four is the public forum and the actual full interviews. So I don't know how we could squeeze that down anymore.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just comparing it to what we did the last time, the last time was essentially a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and.
We did a weekend.
And everything else was unregularly scheduled meetings, and, uh, so, it's, it's.
We had more time last time or two, we had an extra month, actually an extra six weeks because of this coming, two weeks into the hundred and twenty days.
Right, yeah.
So we lost six weeks.
Well, I'm looking here, and we're looking at about six to seven weeks after the, uh, cause I think what we had was a bigger window. The window here is tighter, and we're using a lot of the time up for the, the resume window. It'll be a matter of moving up the interviews and all that stuff.
But he wants the full time to get a good gathering.
Yeah, he's only got two weeks and three days after. Close of resumes, closing applications, to get the notebooks to us. We look at them for a week and say, who do we wanna interview? And two and a half weeks after that, we're interviewing.
Yeah, those two weeks, I really need that, you know, cause I've, I've gotta do interviews, and it's not gonna be with five people. I, I may be interviewing fifteen, you know, uh, to bring that to you, so.
Bring the top five.
Right.
Well, last time we had a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, which is three, basically three days, three meetings, and we're talking about four.
Well, if we can move the thirteenth to the tenth, that'd be a lot happier.
That's five of them.
That's a day before your sister's wedding.
And I'll be able to relax knowing that we have the city manager.
We could do that, I, I just don't know that that, honestly, I, I think that I would like to sleep on it a little bit more than, than that. I think I would like to have a thoughtful time rather than interviewing and the next day just do it. That's why I would opt for the thirteenth of interviewing.
You do remember, you know, know that we would be really looking at their stuff way back here, making the selection of the top five, so we'll be considering those. And then, um, getting together for the questions as we consider the candidates that we pick, meeting them at the public forum, hearing them speak at the public forum. So there's, you know, we will be reading the material, so it's not like you're interviewing for the first time, you're meeting the person and then you need to walk away. That is kind of the capstone, where you've had a lot of exposure to them, their material.
It's just my style, I'm just far more deliberative, I don't even get a refrigerator in the same moment that I see it, you know, I sit down with everything again and rethink it. So if I'm that careful on a refrigerator, on a manager of the city, I'm really careful. So that's all, the thirteenth just worked because it gave that window to really think about, review, be thoughtful, and then come back and have a full deliberation.
And I need to mention one other thing in here. We talked about candidates that are going to go through the process of Mr. Lockett. Then we have the situation that we may have somebody from in-house, in the staff that, that wants to, yeah, city manager. So we need to allow for that to happen also. So I, I, I think that that should be clear at the beginning, we don't know whether we will or we won't. Uh, because we, we did broach the subject when we said we were gonna look for a search, that we may not find anybody that we feel meets the standard that we're gonna set. And we may find that we have somebody in-house that wants to do it that does meet the standard. So we should make sure that we're allowing for that, so that gives us time to be thinking. That goes to the point of, we need to be thinking and, uh, as we do our comparisons, uh, add that into our process.
So, Mayor, if, if I hear you right, we're going through this whole process, we've got the candidates, we do these steps, and the interview is finally over on the ninth, and then we come back on the thirteenth to make a decision. If there was somebody in-house or some bodies in-house that wanted to, um, apply, make the application, do they do this during all of this going on, or when is that brought forward, should it be a possibility?
Well, that's what I wanted to discuss with council, how we wanna handle that, because, um, we had not really broached that subject.
Correct.
We had said at one point, in fact, it was you, Christine, that said, you know, we should allow for anyone who wants to.
I think so.
And, um, so we need, we need to at least have that avail.
I don't know what the process would be.
I was keeping that sort of in mind as I was reading through the contract, and we're contracting to try and find a city manager. If we don't find a city manager, basically reject all the applicants, council's still free to hire whoever we want. Basically, we would not have a successful search process if we don't accept any of the candidates. And then we, we can select anyone, anyone that can speak English almost, I mean.
It would be a really good job.
No, they have to meet the standard that we've set.
We don't have to follow us that process, we can select anyone.
I guess the question, the question is, would they go through the interview process or would they be added in afterwards?
Well, I think they added in afterwards is what.
Because we know that they're.
We'd reject all the.
You just qualify. You just need to go through all this first and then add again. If we're up against this deadline of the twenty-eighth, it's my understanding that we as a council could appoint the city manager for a month. You'd have to get the acting party out, is that correct?
It is a possibility, you could do that, you would, um, there, there's no guarantee to the term of the city manager. So because it's an ample position, you could make it for a very short term if that's.
To finish up anything else.
I, I know. That circumvents the goal and purpose of the clause in the charter, I can't be a party.
And the charter is very clear on that.
I think that we can, in a hundred days, we ought to be able to find somebody who will manage this city.
The process is designed to have internal or external candidates, anyone who feels that they wanna apply can apply. And we'll put them through the same process, so it's even fill for everyone. And then, you know, you make your choice as to who you feel is the best, um, for the job.
I think you asked that question before, Christine, did you wanna respond? Yeah, I, I'm not sure, um, what my colleagues feel, but the, the question, I, I think, uh, that we need to settle on tonight is whether an external candidate, potentially in-house, um, would, uh, not go through the process, but would just simply let it be known that they're interested in submitting a resume to us directly, but they would not go through the process. Otherwise, they would have to go through the process from the very beginning. I'm sorry?
I think we'd have to go through this whole process.
And reject them all.
Reject everyone.
Okay.
And then we'd look, I mean, basically we'd have our obvious top three candidates.
Well, as per Charles' interview, he said he would expect internal candidates to go through the process. So, if, if we want internal candidates to have a free pass, we need to be willing to take the risk of rejecting all candidates and hope that there really is an internal candidate.
Correct, that would have to be understood.
That's what, that's what we talked about originally, was that we understand that they're perfectly qualified. And that's.
Right. And, and remember, uh, to begin this whole thing, uh, we do have a, uh, profile of the ideal candidate as we did before, the ideal city manager. And so we have a standard that we set, uh, they have to meet a certain criteria.
There, I, excuse me, that, that was gonna be my next concern.
Right.
I don't see anywhere on this schedule where we approve a profile.
Right, well, I was gonna ask that too.
I think that's what this meeting was, actually, that's why I thought this meeting was profile.
I thought that would be the issue of salience tonight, because like the profile for ideal candidates, that way it helps Charles identify a slate of candidates to, to give you, without a profile, it'll be all over the board.
Well, but nowhere does it say, nowhere does this say, this is, I'm gonna develop the profile and then bring it back to you to make sure that I can put on here what you want.
It, it's mentioned in the contract under B, three, B, develop a profile of the ideal candidate, but it doesn't, it's not on this.
It's not on this schedule anywhere, where we get to see that again.
What, what I've done is prepare that job announcement, and in that job announcement, I've laid out some things, uh, for the ideal candidate. Then what I was gonna do is get your input on those six questions, and see how that matched up against the other. We would be using that when we evaluate the candidates, in essence, that profile based upon those six questions, your response to those six questions.
But we never see it.
But you're gonna, you do see the job announcement, so I want you to go through the job announcement.
Charles, with all due respect, you get this job announcement, then you're going to interview us for those six questions, you're going to interview department staff for those six questions, you're gonna interview the people for those six questions, and you're going to amalgamate that. And then you are going to evaluate candidates based on that amalgamation. Did you ever hear me say we're going to approve that amalgamation? It's not in the schedule, and I think if you are going to interpret what we say to evaluate candidates for us, we need to have some opportunity to say, yeah, you got it right.
That was the purpose of the job announcement, when you go through that and you review it under the ideal candidate, I want you to take a look at that and tell me if I.
Ready, let's do it.
Did you receive all the information when, when we set up a profile before?
Yes, I did.
Three years ago?
Yeah, I did.
I got that.
And then had the specific tenant about, um.
Well, I, I think there's a key activity that's missing from this schedule, but if everybody else is comfortable, I'll play on the team.
I guess I would suggest that we do talk about, the idea of the profile would be talked about tonight. We can go ahead and break down, Christine supplied us with these three different things, we can look at the job announcement now. And then, the next phase would be, see how this fits and develop the profile. I think the profile would be determined this evening. Yes. And I know that the gathering of the information, you're doing that as well, and you get that information, but ultimately, um, those six questions aren't all about profile.
No, not at all.
So, uh, and that's what's going to be presented to the staff and to our citizens, so I don't know that that has also a lot to do with the profile. I think that what we're gonna do tonight.
He said, what he's gonna use for evaluating candidates?
Correct.
April twentieth is the council meeting for us. We could have a review and approval on that date, which invites us to start the campaign advertising, since you're doing it primarily electronically.
I mean, I, I just wanna see what our candidates are going to be evaluated against, I think, I think we deserve to know that.
We, what I was hoping is that we could take the job announcement, go through it, look at that part, well, we look at all of it, see if you had any problems with it, if there's anything I haven't captured that would need to capture. Then when we look at the, uh, knowledge of skills and abilities part, that's where you would key in and say, hey, you've blown it here. There's something else that we need in here, or, you know, um, this is not what we want. And that's what I was hoping we were gonna, gonna do.
Well, for example, um, under education and experience in the job announcement, you've got, um, a minimum of ten years of increasingly responsible senior management experience in municipal government or other governmental agencies. And previously, we had fifteen years, and, and so why would we be lowering our standard from fifteen years to ten years at this point? We shouldn't be. And there, there's some other things that, um, I have some concerns with, with, uh, the standard of how we're gonna judge the folks.
We're, we're getting away from our agenda though, we need to finish item number two.
Well, I thought we did, on the calendar?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna read through it and make sure we're all at the same pace.
Yeah, the dates that I have, why don't I take a shot at it, okay? The only changes on page, front page would be, uh, June sixteenth is now the fifteenth, right? June twenty-third is now the twenty-second. Twenty-fourth, we leave where it is, July seventh, we leave as is.
No, no, we changed that to July sixth.
July sixth.
Oh, no, no, Ju- July seventh is, that doesn't concern you, that, that's the, uh, yeah. The July eighth and ninth, we change to July sixth. And then the fourteenth and the fifteenth, we change that to the eighth and ninth. And then the July twentieth, we change to July thirteenth.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what about the month?
That's why I thought we were done.
And, and the last one, we would just, you know, we'd just move that up. The twenty, July twenty-eighth, we could move that to starting from the fourteenth. Let's see. Fourteenth. Yeah, twenty-first, that, that gives them a week. Is that okay?
Yeah, the only, I, I would request if there's any way at all you can move July seventh to July sixth, I'd appreciate it. I know that you've got a holiday to work around on that background check and those sorts of things, so that may not be possible, but if it is, that would give us more than twenty-four hours to read those plans of action before we begin interviewing.
Right, July seventh, just.
July seventh, July sixth?
If you could.
Yeah, yeah, that could be done, because, matter of fact, that could possibly even be, I mean, it gives.
If they're done before then?
Yeah, I, yeah, what I can do is, as they come in, I can get them to you.
That's right.
Fine.
But even more so, um, I think I'll allow, how many days for them to do that? I want to give them at least two weeks.
Yeah.
But I think I gave them more because of the holiday, you know, you've got.
Let's go back to that, as they come in, you'll send it to us, what do you mean?
Their written report.
No, I think we oughta get all the written reports at one time from everybody to evaluate them at the same time. If we get one, we start thinking, oh, about that person, we need all of them.
Okay, six.
As a packet.
All right.
But if you could move that up that one day, then we do have a full day, actually two days, to review them.
All right, okay, all right. And even if I got all of them in even prior to that, I could send them out to you.
If, if they're all together, yeah, if they're all together.
All right, good enough, okay.
We do have a problem.
Six or similar.
You have a problem with the date?
Well, July thirteenth, we can't make it, if we're trying to make a decision with the city manager, that one we can't.
Yeah, everybody's gotta do it.
That one's gotta be, uh, we gotta rethink that a little bit.
No, 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 it's not good.
It's from, uh, Mary, because.
How about the fourteenth, Martin?
You can move, no, not that week, but you can move the eighth and the ninth of the seventh to the eighth, and then have a meeting on the tenth, and that, that way you have a date between.
Right, starting from the twenty-fourth.
So four, four nights, yeah.
That's good.
Seven and eight, July twenty-fourth.
Tuesdays, the public forum, Wednesdays, the candidates, and then Friday, we meet.
It's not four nights, it's three nights in a day.
June twenty-fourth.
The tenth? I can't man the tenth.
Then we're into the week.
Then we're back to the twentieth, guys, and that's not, no.
Well, or you, it's a special meeting, you call a special meeting.
But if Martin can't be here because he's in Pennsylvania.
We're going into the week now, the fourteenth, the fifteenth.
When will he be back, Martin, from the wedding?
No, I, yeah, I have, I have another obligation that week, uh, work obligation. So, again, that whole week proceeding is fine, and that gives us, you know, that's, that's five days, including, and, uh, Saturday. Well, Saturday, obviously, we'd be out now.
It's just been brought to my attention that even, I was trying to allow just about two weeks for the individuals to respond, but if they're getting them on the twenty-fourth of June.
We've got ten days.
Then, it should be. It, it should be, no, it's not July. It, it should be, no, July seventh, then, the date that they received it, that would make it.
They're getting them on the twenty-third, aren't they? Didn't that date get moved up when the twenty-second got moved up?
That would make sense. Oh, yeah, that's right, you're right, that is right, yeah, that becomes, that becomes the twenty-third, that's just one more day. Twenty-third. Yeah, six is thirteen, that's, that's good enough. Okay, let's leave it the way it is.
Gives them a week to rate it.
Yeah, and they'll know ahead of time that it's coming.
Six.
Okay, all right. Are we all set on the dates then?
No, we're.
Well, our budget, our budget is on the web, so they could be accessing a lot of that information themselves. They don't have to wait for it to come in the mail.
What's the stumbling point now?
Well, after the thirteenth, yeah.
That's where we make our final decision, and we are not all gonna be in town.
Oh.
Can we do speakerphone? Would you be available for that?
Well, yeah, you can be available by speakerphone, but, you know, if that's what you guys wanna do, then I will accommodate that.
What was the concept on the tenth, the mail?
I'm gonna be gone also the tenth, eleventh, about that same weekend that Martin's gonna be. And then I'll be back for the thirteenth.
What, well, if we move, if we move the, if we move the interviews to the seventh and the eighth, then we could meet on the ninth for deliberation.
Mm-hmm. That works.
We've got a whole week then.
You're gonna be in town on the ninth?
It just.
I think it gives more time to hiring too, 'cause that could be done on the tenth, 'cause I didn't offer, so.
It just doesn't give that time.
And then, but what it does is it gives that, it gives that week to, you know, for the candidate to think about whether he wants to take the, he or she wants to take this job and get back to us, and then it gives us another ten days that could I negotiate, so.
So we have the public forum on the seventh, the interviewing on the eighth, and then we deliberate the evening of the ninth.
Those of you who work for money.
Okay.
Yeah, you got it.
Pretty much.
So what are the new dates then?
July four, uh, seventh is the public forum.
Well, we have, currently we have, okay, so the sixth is okay, right?
Yes, we train.
Right, that's for me and our council meeting and our training.
Okay, so the seventh, and then what's the other date?
The eighth is to interview the candidates, that's when we do the interview on the eighth.
Okay, all right.
Right.
And we deliberate on the ninth.
And I think that ninth meeting should be an evening meeting, because it's all.
So you get today.
Yeah.
They just.
Yeah, and ponder and make your lists and.
Let, let me make sure, I just crossed off so many times, so it's.
It's dark.
Welcome to our world.
I'm teaching, you don't teach that week. It's the Wednesday, do you teach that?
Summer time.
What?
It's Wednesday, well, no, no classes, but I'm not teaching, I'm teaching online class, so.
So you're fine.
I did not commit to.
Did I teach on Thursday, I'll cancel.
Okay, we're saying the, we will meet on the sixth, which is your regular date, and at that time is when we'll have the training to develop the questions, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then on the seventh, we will have, that's when we have the.
Public forum.
The public forum, okay, public forum. And then the eighth is interviews then, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, we still have the thirteenth then?
No, no, July nine.
Oh, that becomes your, ooh.
Yes, we're just gonna, this whole week is gonna be about CNN.
We are gonna earn our money.
That's right.
Yeah, but you, you're saying the eighth are gonna have the interviews, and then the very next day you got a?
That evening.
But not till that.
Following evening.
Yeah.
The following evening.
Nice.
We'll be okay, we'll be good.
We'd like to have longer, but we can't.
Okay.
We have to come together as a group, and the telephone deal is, I've been on the other hotline, the telephone, you miss a lot.
Yeah.
Ninth for the interviews then, and then the date, no, no, the ninth is, the ninth is deliberations.
Right.
Okay, good enough, all right. I will change it and get it back to you tomorrow then. Before I leave the meeting then, if I can get everyone's, everyone has, operate through emails, is that okay?
You can send it through the manager.
Okay, yeah.
He says, and.
Okay, sure.
Whoever's gonna be there.
So I'll, I'll make these, these changes, okay.
Martin, there's absolutely no way you can put off that commitment till, to start until Tuesday? Because that would give us that much more time to sleep on it.
Well, you know, I'd be amenable to the twentieth, but.
That's too soon, yeah, I'm not.
But that still would give us what, a week though, wouldn't it?
Just a week.
Well, if we would have four candidates.
But per se, we don't find anybody, you know?
We gotta negotiate a contract, and, and the other thing is, if they're a sitting city manager, depending upon their contract, they're going to have to give two weeks to thirty days minimally, so even at the schedule we have, there's very little likelihood that the guy's or gal is going to start on the twenty-ninth of July.
Very true, it doesn't say they have to start, they have to have a contract.
We have to offer, yeah.
Yeah, they offer, they don't have to start.
They have to be under contract, yeah, or some.
Yeah.
John began with this tone.
Okay, so we're set on those dates?
No, it's.
Yeah.
Well, I'm assuming that most of this is gonna be evening, where is there anything during the day?
Correct, the eighth is all day, the interviews.
Oh. Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, and please, plan a, a day for it, I mean, don't shirk that, I don't, I should say shirk, but, and, and if you don't. Yeah, I'm gonna say that, yeah, yeah. Uh, we, we need to make sure that we give them enough time, okay, for the interviews. And so that, that is gonna be a, a full day just about, as long as we have five. Narrow it down to less than five. All right.
Okay?
Okay, so.
So now can we go back to the job announcement?
Right, yeah, the second job announcement.
On this one then.
What?
Do you want April twentieth, the council of, if it approves the profile, before it's published?
Yes, tomorrow, let's make some. Wait, you can't send out the, this, I think this has to include the profile. If someone said, you know, what are you look, who are you looking for, this is the place to have it, and all of our other samples that we received from the other search firms, including Mercer, included that information, so I think we need to develop that. But there are some errors on the job announcement that we, we've seen, we know, so let's correct that first.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Um, let's start with the city part first, okay, walk through each section. Any changes to what I put in under city? And this I got off of your website.
Right.
Okay, if not, then let's move on to city manager part.
Question, question. In the nation, are we still among the top ten safest in the nation?
I think we're eleven now.
We're higher than that.
We're not the ten.
While your written material.
Top six.
Your written material.
Yeah, we're top six.
With the top six now, or what's it, sixteen?
Yeah.
Top sixteen safest in the nation then?
Yeah.
Good catch.
Top tier.
We're twenty-five miles from downtown Detroit, we're eight miles from Detroit.
Yeah, that's true.
Actually, we're six miles.
Six, yeah.
Change it to six miles?
No, no. It's considered to work downtown. Downtown.
Twenty-five miles.
I don't know why that's even in there, I mean, it really.
You can take it out, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just, it's not adding anything.
No, if, if you have people from other parts of the country, they always ask, how close are you to a nearest, you know, city? And I say, where are you?
Yes.
So that's, that's the reason why that was.
I would say twenty-five miles from downtown Detroit.
Yeah, I think so.
The ones that I see, or the ones that were included from other search firms, are just so positive, I'm dying to work in any of these places. And I guess I just don't get the sense of it from the way that's framed, this is all it is, and it says, you know, go look at the website, but the ones that we've seen, samples of, really.
Are they colorful, they have pictures, they.
Oh, you know, it's the most fabulous place ever, and that's what I guess the standard, even.
Isn't that under community coming up? Isn't that all positive?
Uh, I'm not, can't, I think our city is fabulous, and you, you mentioned it yourself.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, some of the cities that we've got copies of sample ones, aren't really that fabulous, but when I read them, I'm just thinking, my gosh, gotta get there, and I'm, I, I'm asking, I mean, that's what I would expect. I would expect this to be just the best place, gotta get there, don't you think?
So maybe we should jazz up the, the way it's presented, too.
Oh, yeah, it needs, it needs presentation help.
I mean, it's far below the standards that we, you know, from other search firms.
You're saying it's too plain?
No, I'm saying that it's not selling the city as much as the city can be sold, both in the content and in the presentation. It's just, it's just not there. I mean, this is our one chance to catch, to throw out, to catch the, a big fish, and I think we gotta use what we, what we have.
Under the community part, that's, that's not coming through, I mean, this is, and a lot of that came also from the Oakland County book that you have, the one, you know, where you laid out.
Well, I know you're gonna go through city manager, I suppose we have on each section, I don't know, Wade, did you pitch anything else on city? 'Cause I have stuff on the next two sections too. Did you find anything else on?
No.
Under community, which you've been talking about, I know you said it has excellent high schools, all three of its high schools placed in the top five percent of the nation's schools. Um, maybe you were thinking about the IA, which is not in Troy. So we have actually, we do have excellent schools, and we have three excellent high schools, one is a, an alternative high school, not ranked there. So that's not correct.
Then it's saying three.
It says all three of its high schools placed in the top five percent of the nation's schools by U.S. News and World Report.
Eight lines from the bottom of the page.
It's two.
But isn't the alternate school included as one of those three?
But it doesn't rank at that.
No, it doesn't rank.
Oh, it doesn't rank, oh, so you're saying, what, it should be two?
Yeah, I'm saying it's incorrect, change it to two.
Okay, all right, okay.
Two of its high schools.
And then where are we on the AAA bond rating?
We're still there.
We're still there, we just lost one of them.
Just one of them, so it's a fair.
We can still claim them. Two out of three is still hold.
It's two high schools.
At least three is.
Just say two, excellent. All two of its high schools.
Which is two.
Both, oh, oh, both of its high schools, thank you, yeah.
Well, that's not true at all.
No, 'cause that's not true.
We have three high schools.
Before, if you count the threat.
So you say Troy High School and Athens High School are both ranked in the.
Athens is true.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Troy and Athens High School.
Yeah, you name the high schools and say that they are both placed in the top five percent of the nation's schools.
So name the two high schools?
Troy and Athens.
Troy High School and Athens High School.
Troy and Athens High School.
Mm-hmm. That's good.
Okay. All right.
Are both. I guess when I read this, it's, and, and the last sentence of this is duplicative from the synopsis of the city, so as an editor, I have issues with that, but. When I read this, Charles, and I think it speaks to Mary's point. This is a very good executive summary of what's on our website. An executive summary usually doesn't build passion, and, and that's the issue with this, when we're trying to get somebody excited about wanting to work here, so that's where I am.
Oh, ma'am?
Yeah?
I, I don't know if there's time to work on this and get back to this, but perhaps Charles could get with Cindy Stewart. Cindy's been real good with the, putting things together in that passionate way.
You know what, he's being paid for that, that's exactly why we hired, or, you know, you.
It's a bad idea, let's.
You know, he's, that's, it was so that staff wouldn't be burdened with this, that's what exactly we hired the search firm to do, and other search firms did it.
And he had to read our website and gather with the stuff on the website.
It's not just the website, I also went to that, where you put your best foot forward, in that Oakland County book, where you say this is what you have in the city. All of these are positive things about the city. Anyone reading this from the outside is gonna say, wow, that's, that's a place I'd wanna go work.
I, I think the, the thing is, our community guide that just came out, it was a slicker publication, I mean, as far as the pictures, the way it was presented, the layout, the whole thing. And of course, I have concerns on the education and experience thing, that I wanna change the ten to fifteen years as a specific item. Because that's what we, the standard we used before.
Prefer graduate degree in public administration-related field plus fifteen years as leader and executive in similar municipality or private sector, this doesn't even include private sector, which this.
Right.
You know, have said, that was the language before.
Change the ten to fifteen years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And graduate.
Graduate degree in preferred in public administration-related field.
Well, it has masters as desirable.
I think it's preferred.
Yes, it is, right.
Preferred doesn't mean mandatory though.
Correct, it doesn't go exactly right.
No, that's just a common clarification, so I'm gonna make sure it's the same.
What about the, the private sector?
It's, it's, one from before was prefer graduate degree, this is Mercer, which Charles has a copy of, prefer graduate degree in public administration or related field plus fifteen years as leader, that fits with some of Wade's things, leader and executive in similar municipality or private sector. And that's the language that came the last time, or equivalent combination of education and experience, that's really more.
Yeah, that's, the thing I wanted to add to that is what, the one thing that came out of our, our.
What'd you draw? Oh, price of government?
The, yeah, the price of government and the whole review of that was the entrepreneurial spirit.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should add as a paragraph, or a sentence at the end. Preferred to have, like entrepreneurial spirit, experience.
Mm-hmm.
Experience in basically starting stuff, and we're gonna get into that in what they've completed.
With the band of knowledge and skills.
The other thing is, although.
That's an experience, yeah, either way, either way it puts.
Yeah, Mercer said executive experience in an organization of similar size or budget or subject to that effect. I think it's operational leadership. We don't wanna CEO, we wanna COO, because whoever it is will take direction from a legislative body, and if he's a CEO, he or she thinks he can just go make decisions.
And will be totally frustrated, yeah, totally frustrated to come in here.
The other thing that I think that we need to be honest about is, we need someone with experience in dealing with a divided legislative body. This is a philosophically divided legislative body. And if we aren't honest about that, we get a candidate in here who is going to be frustrated with us, and we will be frustrated with them, and really, we need somebody to.
We should know that upfront.
Have those skills to bring us together, so that we are a better legislative body. So I want that added in.
Way I phrase that, under qualities, is ability to draw consensus solutions from diverse opinions.
I think it has to be more forceful than that, from a philosophically divided legislative body.
Would you have it under knowledge and skill stated?
I'd put that under the questions.
Oh, okay, all right.
But.
We have, we have wording still from Mercer on that, it doesn't say philosophically or ideologically.
Because we don't.
Right.
But it says a style of professionalism, it, it, it says the ideal candidate will have a record of excellent skills in management, finance, and cost-effective service delivery, a style of professionalism, team building, and respect for expert innovative staff. Ability to facilitate council priorities and align city work program for measurable performance, experience with maturing communities, redevelopment, collaboration, I think that's a better fit, all of that's a. I think that's a better fit, all of that's a better fit than what's on here.
Well, the difference is, that's a profile, this is an ad, right?
This is from the ad. That's the Mercer ad.
I think Robin has a good point, because there's a certain person that, um, we really do need. And we need to make sure that, that's addressed in whatever information we send out, whether it's a profile or an ad.
Or Charles evaluation or whatever, but I, I think it's critical.
So what are the salient things that we wanna capture then, that's not there or that needs to be changed? On the education, I changed it from, um, fif- ten to fifteen years and preferred instead of desirable. And then there was one other thing that, um, oh, put in the entrepreneurial.
Private sector.
Oh, the private sector, excuse me, is, private sector.
City manager.
COO. Or COO of an organization of similar size and budget.
But you see, that was stated before, but your population of eighty thousand, right? Okay, eighty-five. But the last time you hired a city manager, city manager did not have a population of that size.
True.
It was thirty-seven thousand, yeah. And there are some good people out there that may be in a little smaller than this. That are looking for opportunities to move up, and I don't know if you wanna automatically eliminate that.
I agree.
But I think we still want preferred experience in those areas.
Oh, prefer, yeah, it still has to prefer, but it.
I think we still want preferred.
It's just, the part, excuse me, was just on, of similar size, you know.
I think size should be referred to as staff, not population.
That's what I, yeah. Government size.
So like.
But four hundred, yeah.
The three hundred to four hundred, three hundred to five hundred person staff.
The table of work, I think.
Yeah, right.
Cause that, that crosses governmental and private sector.
Well, and the other thing is, we'll, we'll be able to tell if they come from a population of thirty-seven thousand and they're running out with four hundred people. They're probably not who we want.
That's a problem.
Entrepreneurial startup, as good as they are.
And then, Robin, you had good wording on, uh, putting in about the, uh, council.
History of dealing with, uh, successful history of dealing with a philosophically divided legislative body. Because that would include a board of directors as well.
Okay, successful?
History of dealing with a.
Okay, successful history of dealing with a.
Philosophically divided or divergent, however you wanna put it, legislative body.
Let's just go and say divided.
I mean, that's not gonna make us all that attractive, but I think we deserve some honesty, at least at the evaluation stage.
You know, and I, I guess if I, again, putting an ad out there. I can certainly see them, you know, coming through and then figuring that out or being blunt, or they'll see, or we'll all tell them. But I, as far as an ad for people clicking through, I just can't see it. I really don't, I don't think that that's, what do we have, weeks?
I mean, it's, it's not just from the council, I mean, there's gonna be disagreements, I mean, I'm sure you've got disagreements on staff or everything. I mean.
Yeah.
It's both sides. That's where I was thinking in terms of drawing consensus.
Yeah, that's better, that's softer, I think that's, that's softer, I think that's better, and I think it's.
That's what we put out last time. And we weren't as divided as we are now.
Right.
And, and if.
I mean, so think about that.
We're not forever though, Robin, we're not forever.
But we need to have the person who comes or wants to come from within, knowing the circumstance that are gonna be here. Because, look, the economy's changed, net numbers have changed. Certainly, we've done some wonderful things in the community, given all the circumstances. But we really need to have an honest, uh, job profile for anybody. I wouldn't wanna go to a situation where I thought, oh, I wish I'd known that, I wouldn't, you know, I would've applied, I wanna use my skills to do that. That's the kinda person we want.
Charles?
Yes.
You have ads and people answer ads, and ads are fairly broad. And then as you go through the interview process with them. Having met with us and understanding the issues. You could also explain and share with those calling in about the dividing council. And so I'm not so sure the ad in itself has to be approached so negative. And that David's point of more positive approach, looking for consensus, and then you. Understanding that there's seven of us, it's an uneven number. And we are ongoingly challenging each other.
Correct, I could point that out to them, but any candidate worth his or her salt. Will go to the website and they will do, I went through your minutes going back for eight months.
Really?
Really.
So you already know.
And I think, I think they're gonna, they should be doing the same thing. But, uh, yeah, but, you know, and so I, I would, I would point that out to them. And, um, the language that was put in there, um. I think you wanna be direct with them, but I don't think you want to. Yeah, come on really negative with them. And so why, why don't you read yours one more time, and then, then ju- just, just see what it is that, that, that David had, okay?
Well, this is a reversal of rules, usually I'm a negative, why Robin's making a positive?
That's right, I'm usually making nice, I'm, honesty's the best policy.
So you're taking turns?
Yeah, sure.
Ability to draw consensus solutions from diverse opinions. Just being an optimal, interest-based solution.
Yeah.
Parenthesis, interest-based bargaining. Interest-based approach to solving problems.
Diverse interests, that was in the last one.
Diverse interests, yeah.
What's your reaction to that, is that okay?
Personally, I think it's too soft, but I, like I said, I'm a team player.
Sure.
If that's a margin, he might hear it. Better, that's good.
May I have your, oh, I'm sorry.
We can, uh, give that information to the person, as you said, if they're gonna research us, they can watch our meetings, you know?
Sure, some.
Uh, they're on the web, you know, whatever, so.
They'll do it.
And, um. But I, I think the more information that the individuals can get, and I agree with Mary's point about that it needs to be. Jazzed up a little bit, I think, and not be quite so plain in the, in the, uh, job announcement. Because we've seen other job announcements, see, we're doing a comparison, so.
The other thing is, jumping ahead one step just briefly, the first two paragraphs of the recruitment strategy. The ads aren't the main thrust, you're gonna be contacting the network.
That's right, but, but you see, the beauty of having them one, that two pager is that you can get that out to, to everyone. They get it and you wanna capture the salient points of the job, you know? And that direct mailing is very, very important. If you give them, you send them a whole packet of that, how many people are gonna view all of that? You know, you can't, so that's the reason for this. And we, we've gone through this, this document here, I've used in thirty-five searches. We use it with the state for our top executives in state service, we use, we, we, first of all, we started off with a large four-pager. And we eventually got it down to two pages, and the thing you wanna do is just capture the salient parts of the job. And that, that's what that tool is for.
See, we're, we're just a different group, because remember, we don't have subcommittees either.
Okay, but let, let's, can we continue to go through it?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, you point out then, okay, so, under education, before we leave it then. I've changed the ten to fifteen, desirable to preferable, put in the part about, um, CEO.
COO.
COO, yeah, COO of, um, what was the CEO role?
Organization of similar size or budget.
Oh, similar size of budgets.
You got the private sector, municipal government, or private sector.
CEO of a, um, well, we already said municipal, CEO of a, um.
Company or a non.
Organization.
Or, yeah, private.
Private.
Similar municipality or private sector.
Does that cover non-private?
Yes.
COO of a similar, COO of a similar. Public or private sector.
Organization.
Public or private sector organization.
Similar municipality or private sector.
I don't know if that just has to be municipality.
That's the point.
What?
I said that's a point.
I'll say government, yeah.
So how is it then, COO of a similar. Public or private organization?
Where's the similar part?
That was a similar size, um, organization and budget.
A county road commissioner executive is going to have a bigger budget than this. And an organization of similar size. So that person would meet this criteria, and very often with an advanced degree. But, given all the other skills we want, will not qualify. So what other skills do we want to make sure that you get the person?
Well, isn't that under the next paragraph, knowledge and skills?
Well, I would say that we have to be careful, because I think a lot of what we're looking for, I don't think we're gonna be able to. Create a box and hope.
No, I, I.
Uh, most of what, the most important thing is what Mr. Lockett's gonna be doing, what we're gonna be doing. And my concern is that if the craft is too narrow, some good people are going to be left out. And you could have very good potential city managers in a smaller city. Or a smaller city that has maybe more obligations than we do in Michigan, if they're in a different state. They might have a water authority that they run. So, um, I would say that's, not get too concerned about the similar size, I think that the duties is what, what our interest is in. And, um, you know, how much, how much responsibility do they have, what was their authority? You know, if somebody bounces around six months here, eight months there, that's a red flag, obviously, too.
I guess. Part of it is that, I agree with what you're saying, but. A similar-sized organization can be pretty linear, where this one is pretty diverse. And that's the skill set we need, is someone to handle the diversity of the organization. And I don't know how we get at that. Because it is an experience piece.
And I think that's best left to the evaluation process, and, and I think that, um. I, I just wanna make sure that we don't draft it so narrowly that we lose good people, that's my concern.
Well, as I'm reading through the knowledge and skill piece that you did, I think that description, I like that description.
I, even on that, I.
But there may be some slight changes that people want in there, but that's a good, um.
But before we get to that, Madam Chair, could we?
Then it's the education and experience.
Take care of the education experience, make sure we have that nailed down where everyone feel comfortable with. What if we said something like CEO of a similar, um.
CEO.
Yeah, CEO, chief operating officer, of a similar, um. Public or private organization, uh, as far as diversity of duties and responsibilities.
You could say similar responsibilities.
Similar responsibilities. How does that sound?
Do you wanna put anything in there with entrepreneurial, would you put that down? Knowledge and skills would be fine.
Okay.
I think you nailed it pretty good, Robin.
CEO of a similar, uh, public or private, a private organization. And.
Similar responsibilities of public or private organization.
So you've got a lot of good, small city managers that have that diversity of experience, but the biggest budget they've ever seen, including road money, is thirty million dollars.
But we did that with, uh, a previous city manager.
Yeah.
It's a person.
Yeah.
Well, we were.
That wasn't where we left it, excuse me.
But I mean, we.
That's the part we need to get specific about.
I, I think it's, it's a decision we have to make. And I, I don't disagree totally with Martin, that you, you don't wanna narrow the search to the point where you've only got three guys in the entire country that are gonna qualify. But, on the other hand, yeah, I, I think that there are certain criteria that we deserve to have people look at. And one is the size of our budget and or the size of our organization, at least at first blush.
Yeah, and that's really, in that narrative, you see that narrative part? I asked for them to, in their narrative, I asked them to give us, um, you know, uh, their accomplishments in planning, coordinating, directing government fiscal and administrative programs. And including the scope of the budget, the project, the budget, and the size that were involved.
Okay.
As long as we switch it to government or?
Yeah, to government or, or private sector. Okay, alright, and, and that comes under, yeah, government and or, oh, yeah. Government and or, and that's what we want, the narrative.
Okay.
That's what you're gonna get.
If that's your focus for the narrative, I believe.
Each of them have to give us that narrative and that, that should be in there, yeah, okay. Alright then, um, now let's move down to, are we, are you comfortable with education experience now? Okay, let, let's move down to the knowledges and skills.
Had folks had additions or changes in there?
Well, I, I.
Which one?
I did, on the last line, I would cross out possess the ability to, they simply have to embrace diversity, I mean, that's what we have as a diversity. So it's not like you have to get that person at that point.
I have the ability, but I'm not gonna use it, darling.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get what it was.
Yeah, it was just cross out possess the ability to.
Oh, possess the, cross out possess in? Oh, just put in embrace diversity.
Raise diversity, right.
Okay, okay.
Then it's a poorly worded sentence, so the sentence needs to be reworded.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Matter of fact, that's why it was put in there, because it was, spell check kept kicking it back. Mary, is that okay to keep that possess the ability in there?
No, then just skip the embrace it, uh, diversity, you have it on the front.
Or willing to.
Oh.
No, no, I think, I think you have, I think you have to have it in there, yeah.
We need entrepreneur's.
Yeah.
And contract negotiation skills.
Interest-based, that's different.
Okay, what else was it, no?
Well, I'm wondering if maybe, instead of worrying about that, we might make a list of some of those qualities that we're looking for. Cause it's knowledge and skills, that we might just kind of shout out to you some of the qualities and you might list them, and then we'll work on, or you will work on the paragraph on it.
That's, that's getting right back to those five questions, so that's fine, that's fine. So then, other things you wanted on there was, were what now?
Interest-based bargaining, experience and success in interest-based bargaining.
That really commits, in a more broader term, is that interest-based approach to solving problems.
Okay.
Then you, you can run a whole stack.
Uh, interest-based approach.
To solving problems. Thank you, John, I knew we had to hit.
Okay, now, you weren't expecting me to put that in there, those, those would just be other things that I would.
No, we're expecting you to put that.
Oh, yes.
Put that in.
Yeah, yeah. But not to worry about wording it right now, just write this list of things that we think are important.
Okay, interest-based bargaining.
No.
No, it's not bargaining.
Interest-based approach to solving problems.
Approach to solving problems, okay.
That's an essential skill.
Yeah, for us it is.
Entrepreneur, I think that's what we talked.
Yes.
Yes.
Entrepreneurial.
Worded that well.
Entrepreneurial. Now, I'm trying to find where I wrote it.
You had a word in your questions or something you said.
Got some of the notes in some of these different pages.
Yeah, do you want this, I just.
If we say that, if we say that interest-based approach to solving problems, then we need to, couldn't there be the ability to draw consensus solutions?
Mm-hmm, that's good, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, yep.
Ability to draw consensus solutions from.
That's up in education and experience. The consensus is up and then the interest-based approach to solving problems. There's a different way to reiterate that in knowledge and skills.
It's well in skills.
Entrepreneurial management, or, I rephrased it when I read it, it's different written down. I have entrepreneurial, private sector management experience as a plus. I mean, but we want it to be not just private sector. I mean, you can do a lot of entrepreneurial things.
In anything.
Public, private. Public, private.
Entrepreneurial skills or experience or.
Spirit.
Yeah. Well, we don't just want the spirit, we want to do.
We want the action.
Experience, entrepreneurial experience.
Oh, okay. Because I'm wondering even if that couldn't, could be added to the narri- narrative, David, where examples of entrepreneurial.
Yes.
Solutions or.
Uh-huh, that would be a good thing over the narrative.
Don't put that in the narrative.
I think so, that would be.
Entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial experience.
Examples.
And solutions.
Yeah.
I like that.
And that goes under, okay, entrepreneurial experience.
That's good.
Entrepreneurial experience. And solutions?
Solution examples is what we're interested in.
Including entrepreneurial experience and solutions. Okay, all right. Okay, so, so thus far I have under knowledges and skills, uh, interest-based approach to solving problems. And then, did we go with Wade, your suggestion? Ability to, what was that?
Draw consensus solutions from diverse interests. And that really rolls into the interest-based approach to problem solving. So, maybe we double that.
It's good to have a double.
Ability to draw.
Ability to draw consensus solutions from diverse interests.
Okay.
Utilizing interest-based approach to problem solving.
Utilizing.
Well, you just brought the two together.
Oh, no, no.
That's different.
No, it's different.
Both skills.
Yeah.
Both skills. Just so ability to draw consensus solutions from diverse interests, that's one part.
That's an experience.
From diverse interests.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
All right. And keep the other one safe. Yes, uh-huh.
As I read through this, just a couple of things, but the first is, um, under my, the first question that you asked, would, would you like to see in a new city manager? I think it spills over into this, uh. This whole thing I'm talking about, there is leadership. And while the assumption would be that this person would be a leader, I, I, I really would like to see some strong leadership skills, understanding that leaders first have to be good followers, but, um. You still have to be leader.
What, what, what if we started off with something to the effect of the ideal candidate must have, demonstrated, demonstrated, a demonstrated track record and thorough knowledge, uh, as a leader? Is that capturing it? Is it? Okay, okay. The ideal candidate must have a demonstrated track record as a leader and a thorough knowledge of the principles, practices, and local government. Is that, is that okay? Okay. That shows experience plus the knowledge part. All right, so, under knowledge, skills, and abilities, one more time, we're gonna insert, uh, demonstrated track record, uh, as a leader. And then, rest of that go on. And then, we're also going to insert two other things. Interest-based approach to solving problems and also the ability to draw a consensus from diverse interests.
I thought we put that sentence up under education and experience already.
No, we didn't.
No, we moved it.
Yeah. No, it, it was under, my understanding was a knowledge and scope, is that correct?
That's where we just put it.
Yeah, right.
So, we took it out of experience.
We never had it up there.
To, to cause this to be a little bit more dated and applicable to what's going on, I had the idea of, of a clear understanding of the current economy and the ability to address the issues that a city might be facing in relation to the economy with feasible solutions. You know, this is, this is all good, but it, it sometimes reminds me of just cliches of sorts. But, you know, we are looking for someone who's going to have to get us through some very tough times. And that is part of the profile. So, someone that does have an understanding of the current economy and the ability to address it with some feasible solutions.
Okay.
And that, where you might wanna put that, I mean, I think you're probably gonna have to take this home with you and reword all this. It's too hard to do it at the table in an appropriate.
How about in the narrative? With the narrative, that would be a great place where someone could give example of.
What they, what.
Yeah, sure. Mm-hmm, what have you done? Your shrinky dollars.
That would be a question that I want to ask in the interview.
Yeah, that, that, that's good. What if we add it on the narrative?
That's good, then they can respond to it.
And we would say something like, um, um, how have you addressed, um, the issue of?
Because where you are now, where you currently now.
This is an example of whether it's a city or a business of sorts. Everybody's being affected by the economy.
Shrinking dollars, how are you continuing to offer services or?
Give us concrete examples of how you've addressed dealing with shrinking budgets. Is that capturing it?
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but i- is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Examples of how you've dealt with shrinking budgets. Okay.
And that, that's probably across the board.
Correct, because everybody's experienced.
Something that isn't included in your knowledge and skills, but I still think is important and maybe, and, and that is, um, an aging community, maturing community. Exa- and I think that's a knowledge and skill set. Experience with maturing communities, redevelopment, and collaboration. There's a whole set of issues. I, you know, I just attended a SEMCOG, um, event last week and again this week, where the numbers are coming out, and it's very clear where we are on that. So.
I think that's a good one.
Ability to deal, ability to, what about this? Ability to deal with, um, um, changing demographics.
Yes.
Well, redevelopment and collaboration. I'm looking for, um, for all of that. Redevelopment, because that's what we have. This is not. And collaboration. So, experience with maturing communities, redevelopment, collaboration. That would be a desirable trait.
Because it's not just the population.
Okay.
It's the community and its infrastructure.
Ability to deal with.
Experience.
Okay, experience in dealing with an aging.
No, it's actually called here, experience with maturing communities, redevelopment, and collaboration. That's where we are.
That's what.
We need.
Period of it, yeah.
Somebody may possess those skills without having had the ability to exercise them as well.
Like?
Anyone?
Southwest.
The opportunity to do it.
Somebody were in academia as well after having left the public sector. If somebody had been a consultant, um, if somebody had been working for, but not have been at an executive level, there are infinite number of reasons. I think that's a desirable skill, but I don't think it's a must-have.
So, it's.
So, we're as, as ability instead of.
It's their experience.
I mean, that's where, we're drawing consensus as an ability. I think that should be experience, but.
We could put it under knowledges and skills then, and that was the.
Ability.
Ability.
Ability to, what now?
Deal with the maturing community, redevelopment, and collaboration.
With positive, work with.
Yeah.
You can get a tape of this movie.
Ability to deal with maturing.
Work with.
Ability to work with, ability to work with maturing community, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
No, there's more.
Okay.
It's not capturing it, really. Originally, it was experience with maturing communities, redevelopment, collaboration.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Ability to work with the maturing community to encourage redevelopments and.
No, so we don't have to encourage, we gotta do it.
Yeah. There's no encouraging, and it's not really work with. It's, you know, how do you approach a maturing community?
It is doing.
Yeah, but we're not gonna go and just force people to come here and.
Ability.
Rebuild.
Well, do we want to have the ability to enhance a maturing community?
No, just skip it.
I think that's how we got into this deal. We have to make these decisions, yeah.
Right. Perhaps if you said the candidate has to have the ability to manage a mature community to have an outcome of redevelopment efforts and collaboration with major stakeholders.
I like it.
You know, I, the last time we went for a search, we didn't, uh, sit down and do all this.
No, we didn't have to, but it seems to be the only way it's gonna go.
Okay.
So. Ability, what, what was it?
I said the ability to managing a, a maturing community, uh, so that the outcome is to pay out redevelopment and colla- collaborate with major stakeholders. You have to achieve it there, don't you?
Okay, good enough, all right. Okay, um. I think I've, I've got it. I'll take it.
Good. Yeah, not, not quite.
A couple of things. I think that we need to be honest that this position will remain open until filled at some point. So, somewhere in, in, in these ads, that needs to be said. And the note under Michigan law, would you please work with our city attorney? Because we've used language in the past that we're all real comfortable with and get that either Peggy or Lori, such that the applicants know how to keep their resumes secret until they're revealed as a finalist. I'm, I'm uncomfortable that this really captures what we're used to.
Lori, do you have any problems with what's there?
Well, the, uh, first sentence certainly is, is appropriate. Under Michigan law, applicants must request confidentiality. Maybe something about, um. Usually we use to the extent allowed under the Open Meetings Act, something of, of that nature. Because, and also, it's not just the resumes of the finalists. It's much more than the resumes of the finalists. It will be subject to public disclosure. I can work with you on that again.
Okay, all right.
I can work with Peggy as well.
Yeah, you can give me, uh, okay, good enough, all right.
I have one very minor point. At the top of that second page, where it says Troy is home to eighty-five thousand residents and six thousand thriving businesses, including a number of Fortune 500 companies that employ one hundred and twenty-five thousand people. Makes it sounds like the Fortune 500 companies employ the largest. So, if we can move to those last four words, add employ one hundred and twenty-five thousand people to behind the word business.
Businesses.
Businesses, yeah.
Well, the, the other thing is that, that whole sentence is in part duplicative of what's on the first page in the first paragraph. It says.
City.
It has a population of eighty-five thousand. And it's the twelfth largest city in Michigan. So, if I'm reading this. It's just, quite honestly, the, the, the way it's worded would make me not wanna apply. I'm an editor.
It's just not up to standard, really.
Say Troy is home to six thousand businesses. We've already covered the residents, employing one hundred and twenty-five thousand people. I don't know where you're gonna put in the number of Fortune 500, and we used to know what that number was.
Dropping like flies, you know?
Yeah.
He's on his way up the torch, too.
Fortune 500. Just one of the major automotive suppliers that you'd like to put in the stamping.
So, I would say something like Troy's a, Troy business. Six thousand, over six thousand businesses and employ one hundred and twenty-five thousand people in a number of occupation-sized businesses, whatever. There's a lot of different ways to word that. You can fix it. I have great confidence.
Where do we stand here?
Were we going to do a profile?
Pardon?
Profile?
Well, I still am of the mind that we shouldn't be having to sit here to do all of this at this point. And I know we had some other things that they wanna, that he wants us to address, like those six questions at the end, uh, and also about the contract.
I will take this, um, redraft it and get it back to you tomorrow.
Well, this is, this is the job announcement. To me, that's not a profile, so.
And then, this is just repeated a number of different times in our packet, the same thing.
It's the, it's just the, what, it's the, what we would be getting out to the candidates so that they could apply for the job. This is the news.
I think it's fine.
I'm, yeah, I.
Lockett, I think you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you for your efforts here, I appreciate them very much.
See, um, did we wanna talk about the contract?
No, that's not what's next.
Okay.
Number four.
Next is the, um, well, the long and short ad, um, unless you have any problems with that, I would suggest we move to the recruitment strategy. The long and short ad is, is really based on certain, certain, um, websites. You can only have so many words out there. So, that was the reason for that.
There, there are some things that will need to be changed in the short ad to be consistent with the long.
Okay.
Third paragraph. I would, I would appreciate if those things were done in the third and fourth paragraphs. And you may have to reword them, but we've given you some additions that are important to us, so.
Okay, yeah.
Under recruitment strategy.
I'm sorry, I'm, you're in the fine, I just wanna clarify. Is the goal then to have approval of these documents at the twentieth, the meeting of the twentieth?
Yes, yes. Your meeting on the twentieth? Your meeting on the twentieth?
Monday night.
On Monday, okay. I was gonna change it and, well, yeah, I guess you'd want me here then, or do you?
No.
No.
Not necessarily.
Alright, good enough, so I just give it to you, send it to you by, I'll send it by email, and then it's distributed to you, is that correct? Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying, okay.
Yeah, and we may have changes and we'll send it back.
Correct, yeah, okay. The only caution I have is that the clock is ticking, okay? Alright.
Yeah, after Monday, it should be going out like you have in your timeline.
Okay, good enough. Okay, recruitment strategy. These are places that I would recommend that we place the ads. I have the International City County Managers Association, of course, you're, you're one of the better organizations. I have the National Association of Counties, and placing them on the websites are very, very inexpensive, you know? We're talking about all of these for less than three hundred dollars or so. Some publications that we will try to get, also try to get it published in the ICMA. But that's why I'm very glad you didn't, didn't reduce that time span, because to get it in written publications, there's more lead time, okay? But with this, would you be able to do it?
I'm not overly excited about the ads, like you're saying, the first two paragraphs, I mean, networking is, I expect you're gonna have to steal someone.
Oh, yeah, that, that's part of it, you know, be a lot of phone calls to different organizations and, and some of that's, well, not some of it, quite a bit of that's already started, you know, just notifying people. The direct mailing is gonna go to that list of all of the county administrators, city administrators, county administrators, road commissions, managing directors of road commissions, you know, about three to four hundred letters will be going out as soon as you give me the okay. And that's the beauty of having that one-page document, get that out to all of those individuals at one time, in addition to the websites, and it's very cost efficient and effective. But you see what I have, do any of you have any problems with any of those organizations? Or is there anything else that I need to add?
I mean, the one that's next to the bottom, if I may.
Pardon?
If I may, the one that's next to the bottom, public sector job bulletins? Yeah. The one that I believe is most effective is Career Builder.
Let's give him a chart, Mary.
Oh, yes, okay.
Career Builder, yeah. That's the one I'd be interested in.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Career Builder, okay. It's got the most, the most subscribers and most...
Gets the most hits.
Yeah, usually when you put it on a written, like if that had a newspaper ad, it would automatically go on Career Builders at once like that.
Yeah.
But as I indicated, yeah, you pay through the nodes for that.
Great, yeah.
Okay.
Hopefully, it might be my career builder, too.
And on the next page, where you've got the short description about city manager, gonna make the changes?
Fifteen years verbal and fifteen years.
Yes, yeah, yeah, in, in essence, any changes we made on the, any changes we make on the larger ones, I'll automatically change it on the short ones. Okay, any questions about recruitment strategy then? Okay, alright. And we've talked about the, okay, then, and number five, we've already dealt with, which is going to be this is the committee, okay. Number six, contract? That's a draft contract, so I was expecting that you would review it and, you know, let me know if you have any problems with it.
Yeah, we have to take out the advisory panel, the panel that put city council in there, other things. Yes.
Just, it, it would be helpful, and I'll say, I did receive a copy of the draft, and I do thank you for that. There are a couple of other things that we should be adding in there, including insurance requirements and the notification, certainly, we would like to change that. But it would be helpful to have council's input and a consensus as to whether or not this contract represents what council desired and what this represents, whether or not this represents the full job description.
Okay.
David?
On the, on page two, under selection services, item D, where you complete the reference checks, are you, I can't remember exactly what your answer was during the telephone interview, but my question was, is if you're checking the listed references and unlisted references, people that work with them, I'd like to have that specified, because you'll contact people that are not on their official list.
Correct, yeah, I routinely do that, I just don't go with what they tell me. Like, for instance, what I would do, not what I do, what I've done, is I will call, like the beat reporter, he covers city council meetings, and talk with him. But not until after we have identified that they are the top, the top five, you know? And they've had a chance to notify their boss, but that would be examples of individuals who I would talk to. I would also talk with, let's say, if they've worked for more than one jurisdiction, not the jurisdiction that they're currently with, but what I would do if they work for a previous jurisdiction, I would usually call routinely that chief of police.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm hoping for, we just need to write that down.
Okay.
And then I noted item number G.
Yeah, so, well, we can change that now, that before we go to G again. Which one was it that you wanted us to...
D.
Okay.
Reference checks, and that's...
That's somewhere now, I...
It's page two.
Page selection services. Oh, page two, under item D it was, okay, complete reference checks.
Both the references provided and unsolicited. I put unsolicited references on them.
I put including people not offered by the candidate.
Yeah. Including people not offered by the candidate. Unsolicited isn't good enough?
Neither was.
Okay, alright, okay, okay, alright, and then what else was it?
Item G is part of your selection services, and that's not gonna take place until later in the year.
That's, that's the way your contract is written.
Right. But I noted that we're not paying the one-third until the selection services is done. So, contractually, we wouldn't be paying yet till a year later, so we probably wanna...
Oh, no, contractually, you, you, contractually, it is, once you've made the offer to hire and the person accepts, that's when the final payment is made.
Okay, well, that needs to be fixed, I mean...
G just has to be moved, is what you're saying?
Yeah, G has to be moved, because it's part of selection services, and it won't be complete.
And then you won't be able to get paid.
So if you wanna get paid, but the decision's made in contract, so...
The one, C G up under selection services, put G under selection services. You see that, it says follow-up, city in the first year of term adjustment made. You're saying if you leave that in there, then you wouldn't get paid for a year. Oh, okay, well, I, I definitely want to... So move that somewhere else. Move that, move that G to, under scope.
To a number, just put on a number.
Number, yeah. Move that on.
Okay, good enough, alright. And Lori, was there other things that you wanted to put in there?
It, it would be my proposal that we find out from council whether or not this accurately represents what, you know, that the scope of services, and then perhaps we are coming back with the other action item on Monday night, perhaps we can work something out, and then we can have a contract finalized to be brought back for council approval on Monday, you think?
Why don't we do this, what I would suggest is that you just take the contract and change it the way that you think, and then get me a draft of it, and if we're all singing out the same hymn, but we go with it.
Can we make the proposal an appendix to this contract? Because that pretty well spells out the cost of services and those sorts of things that I would like to have in here.
That certainly would be an incorporation of the proposal, and certainly would be very standard.
That's, that's the way it's normally done, so no problem with that. If, if I follow you, what you're saying is the, the plan of action would become part of...
The proposal that you gave us.
The proposal, okay, yeah.
That said what you were doing.
Yeah, okay, good enough.
And what it would cost.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty standard.
Now, you're not expecting council responses on the survey?
Um, the third, can I go with the...
Pardon?
Contract, contract. Uh, number two, the administration agreement, that was left blank, and I, for me, I would, would like Lori's one in there.
I love Peggy's.
Yeah.
But it was left blank, and I think it's important to, what was it you said?
Oh, yeah, I know.
She's the one who deals here in Florida. And then, didn't Peggy do the last one?
Mm-hmm.
Which should it be, Lori, I think?
I think, Lori, just because of the Open Meetings Act, the plans, and...
It was one of you two, but I thought...
We certainly will be working, yeah.
Right, but there's a name that's going there, so...
Lauren.
Yeah.
You, you guys, I can answer.
That's fine.
Okay. So then, with the contract, you'll take it and get it back to me once you, okay, good enough, alright.
And if I may, Mayor, there was one other item, too, that has been discussed, and I just wanna make sure that we're clear on this. The internal candidates, I think that, that for both of the parties, we need to be clear on what the expectations are for internal candidates in the city of Troy, and how that all fits in. I think that's essential, that, that that be discussed and be agreed upon.
I'm just trying to get my arms around what it is that we're talking about with the external, the internal candidates. Are you saying that you're gonna have this process, that they, are they gonna participate in this process?
No, they have stated to us that they will, two, well, two of the potentials have stated to us that they won't participate in the process, correct?
That's right.
So, in essence, what you're saying is that you're gonna go through this process, and then you may or may not bring in the others as well?
Well, we wouldn't include them in this process. If we go through this process, and the people that are available aren't as good as people we already know, it doesn't make sense for us to hire the people that you brought, I mean, that, that's as simple as possible.
Yeah, but that's, that's, that's always the way it is, you know? But, okay, I'll keep my mouth shut.
See, I, I, I don't understand, if somebody wants the job, but we can't go through a process, the council, you know, I, I guess I would disagree with someone's being said here. If there's a process set, and somebody doesn't wanna go through it, nobody's forcing anybody to apply for the job. It's the decision the individual may have to make.
Yeah, but you know, things, things change over a period of four months. Situations change. Okay, do we wanna go to council responses to the survey?
I don't think we've got clarification on this.
Pardon?
No, you're gonna wanna put it in.
I thought that...
I don't know that, I don't, yes, I do, because I, I think it's important that Mr. Blocket knows as well what the process is going to be. I think it's very important that it is clarified, and everyone's on the same page.
So, Mr. Blocket, you understand the norm...
Yes, Mr. Zerling.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Zerling.
Thank you.
I couldn't see, either.
An option that you have, is that you go through this process, and you look at an interview of the five candidates. And if you don't like the five candidates, you still pay Charles, it's twenty-one thousand dollars, because you profiled someone, and he brought five people that met the profile. At that point, it's a matter of chemistry, you get along with this person, or expectations that you thought you'd achieve, and it didn't. And then you would close the process. You wouldn't have the diversity that went out to look for a manager, and then said, you know what, thank you, Charles, but here's your class check, and we're gonna hire someone from the council. So you're allowed to do that, independent of an agreement you have, I think, with, with Trump. And that may be a way to go. If you don't want to have internal candidates go through this process. Otherwise, what Martin said, cast blood. So you decided to, to not do it. What Martin brought up, that we're only considering people who go through the process?
Well, I don't know that they're necessarily, you know, from, we also don't have the obligation to hire anybody that he raises.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, I don't think the council will be accused of ever having to be forced to do something they didn't wanna do.
This was a question directly asked during the interview.
Right.
And for some, it was a deal breaker, but it did not break this deal. And Charles' answer at the time of the question was, I would expect internal candidates to go through the process like everybody else, and put up with the same criteria. Now, the only part that I think people are having angst with on that is, that means we pay him twenty-one thousand dollars for finding us one of our own. That's how we set it up, get over it, we gotta pay him anyway. So, that's how it is. But that was the question, that was the answer, we hired him, and so now to say, oh, we're not gonna do that, I think is disingenuous on all fronts.
Well, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I understand that that, I asked the question, that happened to be my question, but I'm not so sure that some of the candidates didn't fully under, or the companies didn't fully understand that. And just because we asked the question, doesn't necessarily mean we agreed with the answer. That was a ten-minute or fifteen-minute interview via the phone. That, that, we're, we're now down to defining the contract, and we have the latitude to discuss some of the issues and come to some kind of agreement. I don't think we're tied in for that, just because that happened to be the answer at that time. No, it's just like what Councilman Harlock said, and, and we know this happens at, at cities. They go through the, the search, if it doesn't work, it's closed down, and then they have the right to move ahead and fill that position in other ways. And I think that, I know that there's been some interest on some internal candidates. They've also shared that they're, they struggle with the idea of going through this, because we, they've been here for a long time, and we do know them. And I think that, I don't know that we should make that a requirement. If they want to apply and go through the process, that's fine. If this process is shut down, and we don't find anybody, then we decide where we're going from there.
And there has to be some legitimacy to it, if you're gonna hire Mr. Blocket, you're gonna have, have the passion of hiring somebody he brings you.
Yes.
It seems rather preposterous to tell them, don't apply, because we're gonna consider you, too. I mean, whether they're gonna use his services or not.
Mm-hmm. And they can apply if they choose to.
That's right, nobody forces them to do anything, that's right.
They can choose, it might be advisable, they can choose.
They can choose to go through it, and they don't have to go through it. But we're hired, and if it's shut down because we can't find anybody, then we have to deal with that, too.
Those are really separate issues, though.
But I think you said it best, our goal is to find a city manager out of the search that Charles does force.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
That is our goal, and therefore, all candidates considered in this process will go through his shop. That is our goal, and therefore, all candidates considered in this process will go through his shop.
Yes, all candidates considered in this process. That's a good way to phrase that.
What does it mean?
It means that we, we hope he's gonna find us somebody to take this job.
We planned for him to find somebody for us.
That's the goal.
Yeah, and they should be internal or external candidates. To apply.
But that will be the internal candidate's choice.
Yeah, but if, if they elect not to go through-
It's not gonna be side by side, it's not going to be where you're doing all this with these, and then we have some other people outside of your process.
Right.
I, I think we have to clarify that, it's not gonna be side by side, what it will be is going through with you, it shuts down, and we find someone, we don't, and we-
Our goal is to find somebody through this process.
Mm-hmm.
And it might pursue an internal candidate to go through this, but it's not necessarily mandatory, I mean, they, that's-
It's mandatory if they want, they want a first crack at the job.
That's what it sounds like, that's what I'm trying to understand, if you're, the chances now, the chances is process.
Yeah. For first crack. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like to me, is that my understanding, because it was different before?
That's what I said. That's my thought.
Well, the point is that, for me, I wanted to, yeah, I have a great, great respect for those that are interested in this job, that have expressed interest. They shared, they didn't, one of them shared, didn't want to go through the process, or he wouldn't do it. So, you know, you're still wanting him, if that desire is there, to be had. And that, and that's where that came from.
We're not wanting to preclude them from it if they don't, but it might be an advantage for them.
It might be an advantage for them to go through it, certainly.
We are gonna choose a city manager through this process.
We certainly hope so.
And if they want to be part of that pool, they need to submit a resume.
But that sounds like that's what they must do.
Yes.
I mean, well, I mean, let's just say that, when I'm saying, what does that mean, that's what it means. It doesn't mean they can, they can not hold off and do it during interviews or anything else.
Hold off and hopefully don't find somebody.
They're gambling if they don't, they're gambling on us not finding anyone good.
Well, yeah, I mean, you don't, don't want to discourage people from applying too, because they don't know if, if they're gonna be given a fair shake, if this is just a sham, you know?
That's right. So, everybody goes through this process to get this job.
And-
Do we need the, the contract, please?
I, I think we've got clarity now, and I think that that's the way that the proposal is written. I just, I knew that there was some concern and some discussion, and I wanted to make sure that everyone understood what the process was going to be, so I, I thank you for that clarity. We can move forward with the, with other parts of the contract. There wasn't a single, um, firm that varied on that? The answer to that question, every-
One of them did.
One of them did.
Oh, was?
Yeah, yes.
He was one, and he would, he would not get paid at all if he chose someone who didn't bring them.
Oh, that was the, oh, the triple, okay. Triple guarantee guy?
No.
No, it was the other one, this, uh-
The guy who's in the room for the-
Oh, okay, the two paid.
No, there's two that said if they didn't bring them, you might have given them a pay.
Okay, so we're, we're all done on that one?
We select the-
All right. Um, you are asking the responses back from us by the thirtieth?
Yes.
When are we gonna ask, answer those questions, or?
No.
Uh, no, what, what I was, what I was hoping you would do is, you could, you have the questions, you could go ahead on and fill them out and get it into me, and I include them as part of that survey that I'm gonna do with everyone.
Right.
Oh, so this doesn't build a profile at all?
No, no.
This is used for evaluation, but we don't, we don't see it.
Oh. I, I still have-
Initially, yeah.
Go ahead, Kristin.
Can you back to go to the profile?
Pardon?
I thought tonight we were going to go around and have a discussion on what each of us are looking for, and you would write and take all those notes, and then, I mean, some of the questions referred to that, not all of them, but some did refer to that. And then you would have a real good idea and basis, and, and while we did go through the ad and we brought out a few things, for me, it wasn't a, um, a full representation of at least what's on my mind.
Okay, could, could we do this, could we take maybe a ten-minute break, and then we come back and deal with the profile?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, we can, we're here.
I think it's important to do this tonight.
That's what I thought we were doing.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
Let's go for a walk.
Talk about profile then.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh... Why don't we just start with what qualities and characteristics? What is it that you're looking for in a city manager? Why don't we go around the table? Okay. Who want to start?
I can start.
Oh, you're sorry.
I can start.
Okay.
One thing I'm looking for in a city manager is someone who's a people person who's comfortable being out in the public, being the spokesperson for the city, representing the city, and has that leadership demeanor. And I'll just give you one thing. I've got others, but I don't want to steal anybody else's.
Go ahead.
Okay. I want a person who interfaces well with the staff, very comfortable holding regular staff meetings, and is comfortable managing by walking around. Someone who stays secluded, but who actually gets out and knows employees in the city. As we stated in the, uh, the job description and profile, I like that they're an entrepreneurial. We stated that. That's the entrepreneurial spirit, creative and creativity.
Okay. Why, it's entrepreneurial creativity spirit.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. What I, what I got of him is someone who has good people skills, someone who could serve as a spokesperson for the city, someone who interfaces well with staff, comfortable by managing by walking around, someone who, um, likes, uh, who, someone who demonstrate, who like and demonstrate to entrepreneurs spirit and creativity. Is that?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
I'll, I'll stop there. Who want to next?
Who's crying on the table?
Okay.
By the time we get to David, they won't hear anything else. Um, building on what Wade said, and I shared that for the short ad, but I'm really looking for, um, someone who displays leadership qualities. And, you know, while I don't think leadership qualities necessarily mean that they want to control everything, they know how to, but they can delegate, but also step up and take charge when they need to. I'm also interested in someone who will work at preserving the integrity of council. And what I mean by that is that, that we are a mayorial, um, management form of government. And council sets a policy, management follows that. And we represent seven distinct ideas and are in conflict at times and at times we're not. But each one of us, not by name, not Robin, not Martin, but the seat itself, there has to be a manager that helps preserve as he or she delegates an attitude, sort of, to the staff to preserve the seat, the integrity of that seat of all seven, not just three, not just four, not just one, but really has a philosophical understanding of the structure of our government that we, by charter, we follow. And that every single person on the council seat, whoever is elected to that seat, needs to be heard, and that the council majority, whatever that is, if it's I'm in the majority or I'm not in the majority, that manager needs to honor that and bring that out to his or her attitude in, as, as they work with the staff. It's very important to me that that is understood. And I know that maybe you can't just put that in one sentence form, but it's important as you do those interviews and you talk to these people, with these individuals, that they can convince you that they have an understanding of their job regarding their relationship with council.
What I got was, well, I mean, did you have any others?
Paraphrase. Well, paraphrase. Well, okay.
Okay. On, on that one, yeah, yeah, I, okay. Someone who, um, will work to, to preserve the integrity of staff, someone who's going to treat each...
Staff meeting council.
You know, with, with council.
With council.
Yeah, with council. Yeah, that's what I said.
I thought you said staff.
Okay, that's, but I, I have, I actually have council right here.
Okay. That's obvious.
Okay. And make sure that, um, they take the time to listen to every individual and that they understand the relationship, uh, between the manager and staff, but mainly someone who's going to listen and treat everyone with respect. They may not agree with you, but they treat you with respect.
Um, kinda, maybe I, I think you missed it just a little bit. I, I think what I'm trying to say here, Charles, is that it, it, it's about treating people with respect. It's all about, we should do that, that's a top and bottom, that's a given. It's understanding that there are seven seats on council filled by elected officials who are representing those that elected them. And that as a manager, when direction is given by resolution, that that attitude then is carried over as they, um, direct their staff that are under them.
Okay.
But the attitude is one of, whether they agree or disagree, it is of preserving the integrity of what we have, our governmental system that we've chosen to follow. Do you understand that?
I do. And, and I guess I would go a step further. It's not only respecting and implementing the decisions of the council as a whole and not undermining those through, you know, well, I would have done it this way, or as a professional, I think you made the wrong decision. It's council made the decision, now implemented, whether you agree or not. But in addition to that, I think that I would look for a city manager who, after a decision that maybe the manager doesn't agree with, maybe two or three council members don't agree with.
Right.
Keeping everybody on the bus, working together...
In a positive way.
To the same end. Whether you agree or not, this is the team decision for the best interests of Troy. And that means that the manager has to manage his staff, and he needs to build bridges with his council to keep them all on the bus as well.
Mm-hmm.
Did that?
Yes. And, and I think this is a skill, it can be learned, but I also think it's very innate for some people.
Yeah. I, I'm picking up what you're saying.
I, I don't want a cookie cutter, um, you know, I've got the degree and I've got this and I've got that, but they don't have the ability to make something like that happen because I think that's the foundation and the beginning point of success.
The decision has been made, now go out with a positive attitude to implement that decision. Is, is that pretty much what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Right. Okay.
Um, and then, did you want to say something?
Okay.
I think that's probably one of the most important qualities of manager, and speaking as a manager, don't mind me speaking.
No, no. That's why I heard it.
I even had that written down as one of the things that, uh, that I thought I had savings, to enhance the council-manager relationship and giving them a zone of comfort in their decision-making process. And that, what I tell staff, I've always told staff, that I think you want quite a similar attitude, is that the council-manager relationship is not a game of chess, it's a game of checkers, it's very simple. You make a decision as senior manager, and that decision's in the form of recommendation, and you advance it. And being taught by the Jesuits as I was, Charles, and we'd like to argue.
Yeah.
But there's a time when manager's told to stop talking, and we're going to go this way. And then it's incumbent upon the manager and the staff to embrace that decision and to be an advocate of it. Or else manager and staff should get a job somewhere.
Mm-hmm. Advocate is a good word to use.
Yeah, that's for implementing the decision.
Right. And positive, and truly important, even if you argue at the table.
Right. You're absolutely right, yeah. That's, that's really...
That's essential, that's...
Of a man, right, yeah. Your staff should never know, well, you know, you could tell them that there were arguments, there were disagreements, but now the decision has been made, this is the way we're going to go.
It's our policy, we have to get into other groups and...
Get on board, yeah. Okay. Easier said than done, all right?
That's kind of a...
Well, it'll get easier to, too, so...
And then what I also shared earlier, but I think this is more of a nuts and bolts. Um, and, and I, I can't imagine anybody not having a clear understanding of the current economic condition. I, I mean, I think, you know, my third grade granddaughter understands that when they say no to the slurpee. But the ability to address what's, what's happening in our economy as it relates to our city budgets, our layoffs, reducing city services, and I, and I think that's part of, and I like the idea of incorporating that into their, what was that called?
Narrative.
Yeah. I really want to see some, some real answers to what they would do in certain situations.
Yeah. I don't want to, um, diverge too much from it, but one of the things, too, that we could do is when we sent out that packet, we could have a series of questions that we want them to respond to.
Kind of like the nets, vignettes? Vignettes, vignettes, or, or what if? And it could be similar to what we're dealing here in Troy with our budget, we have a five and a half million dollar deficit next year. I, I don't guess that they could give us specific answers, but some...
Ability to address economic, uh, issues.
Feasible solutions.
Okay.
And maybe some experience, have they done this, where, where have they done it before? Where have they, um...
That's what I'm hoping they're going to do with the narrative, is address those type of issues, you know? Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. Okay. Next.
I want someone who has a positive attitude, done nature. I want someone who will investigate ways to solve problems on multiple levels rather than just the symptoms. I want someone who is a champion for local government.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. Okay. Someone who, no, investigate, um...
Who, who will look at solving problems on creatively on a multiple of levels, not just addressing the symptoms. I want someone who is a champion for cities and their place as the personal service delivery agent of government.
Someone who's a champion for cities and...
And understands that we are the people who, we are the element of government that delivers the most personal services to the American taxpayer.
First.
Mm-hmm. You're going to feel a bit here.
Yeah. Or you don't.
Okay.
And if someone doesn't understand that, I don't even want to talk to them.
I don't have to learn about philosophy, but it's very important.
Okay. Good.
Those are my three pieces.
You can have as many as you want.
Well, Christina mentioned leadership, so I have some traits of leadership that, that I think are important. Um, an enquirer, a thinker.
An enquirer.
Wade mentioned the importance of being a communicator.
Communicator, yeah.
Um, something that I think we all share is someone who's principled, principled ethics, Something that is important to me, and I, I, it may be even, and I don't know, Christina, if you'll agree with me or not on this, but I do want someone who will speak truth to power. I understand that the end, after vote is taken.
Right.
But before that, I think it's just so important to be unafraid to speak to council, to say, you know, these are different ways that you can do it once the decision is made. But I don't want someone fearful or timid or lacking the ability to take the risk. I don't want a sycophant.
Not caring enough to take the risk.
I don't want a sycophant. I don't want someone just...
Telling us what they think we're like.
Yes. And me specifically. I just, I want someone who will speak the truth. I just, anyhow. Um, I think it's important that we hire someone who can anticipate trends and get on top of them. I think we've had that before in John, who can see that visionary quality where you can really see this is coming so that we're not, um... And I, and, and one thing that may have come up, and I, I'm just sharing this, I don't know if it's a value of, of council, but it came up before. Do we want someone who is, um, at ease in the community? Do we want...
I would do.
And we have, John, I know, is always comfortable with that, but I think that that was something that came up before. Do we want someone at ease and comfortable in the community? Not just articulating, but...
Yeah. No, Wade mentioned that.
To be involved.
Public presentation.
The demeanor to be out there.
At least willing to put forward the effort, yeah.
Who, who relishes, I mean, enjoys it. You, and, and you don't have to, to, um, Robin's point, and then I'll, I'll close on this. There was a recent study by the University of Michigan regarding mood, and Robin said, it, kind of an optimistic spirit, but those weren't your words, but someone who, um, what did you say? Sunny didn't say.
Positive attitude.
A positive attitude. That within two hours of being around someone, that people pick up that attitude.
Feel good about it.
So that if you're around negative people for two hours, the result is you've got a negative flu. And so I, I agree with that. I didn't, um, until I saw the numbers on, on, on how that worked out. I absolutely agree. It needs to be someone who is genuinely cheerful and can relish some of the challenges that we have, but does it with that sense of optimism and a can-do spirit. And I, so I...
Well, how do you follow that one?
Okay. Good? Okay. So the city manager is sort of a bridge between staff and council, and, um, it kind of dovetails with what's going on, and we're seeing what you're saying, in that it is imperative that, that, that we do have a strong city manager who's able to ensure that council's directives are followed through. And, and it's a difficult position to be a city manager because sometimes you need to do things that you might not necessarily agree with, not necessarily, if it's the moral, but perhaps a policy direction that you don't necessarily agree with. It's a, it's also important that the, um, city manager ensure that politics stays out of the day-to-day operations of the city. And, um, and you can do that by, um, you know, the manager has to be an advocate for council, he also has to be an advocate for staff. The, the city manager needs to assist the staff in realizing that council, and, and also assist council, too, in that council and staff are really in the same game, or in the same team. And at times, um, I don't know that that's necessarily, um, been successfully accomplished in the city. That, that's, that's, those are some really important things. Also, um, you know, we can get even bombarded with challenges, and we're not necessarily any different than any other city in the area, but the, the city manager needs to be proactive in addressing long-term structural iss- issues because Troy needs to maintain, um, an ability to continue in the future. It needs to be, um, its structure needs to be self-supported. Um, so the city manager needs to, um, help the council to identify those long-term structural issues and help council to address them proactively. And, um, so those are being some qualities I think are important in a city manager. Okay. Several of my add-ons already covered. The thing I broke down was big was the entrepreneurial spirit, um, but we've already added that earlier. The other thing that I think is important is, and this ties into what Christina and Robin were saying earlier, and you have to be able to work and, and, and pull things together, but you also have to understand the limit. You can't just proceed and, and do things until someone tells you no. You have to know the limit where you have to ask.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a very difficult line to draw.
Ask and apologize, Lee.
And I think that comes a lot from the communication skills, a lot of the informal communications that need to occur between council and informal communication with staff, which is, I think, one thing I'd like to add to Wade's comment, is, um, is he manages well formally and informally. The formal management is staff meetings and...
Sure.
And the formal meetings, but the informal is when you're walking around the city, making sure you know people, visiting all the departments, et cetera. And then also, you guys touched on a little bit, um, you also need to be able to handle, um, handle, you have to be cool.
Even tough.
Handle the pressure.
Yes.
Balanced.
Cool.
Cool, even to a...
Balanced. Balanced.
If you're residents, walk in your office.
Balance, even.
Cool.
Cool.
Cool. C-O-O-L, right?
Cool. K-O-O-L.
Can't throw more than one chair a year across the room of council.
What about those, someone's...
You go in your office or out in public.
Territorial.
It's a stressful thing.
Okay.
You got a lot of crosses, you're crossing all of them.
We can agree on all that, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's okay.
We're first. We're remarkable.
Just agree on doubles. All right.
Get a good feel after.
Yeah, let's see, we, we came to it, but we had followed that thing, we've been through it.
But we got to, we got to hear it from each other.
I know, I know.
We needed to hear it from each other.
It's good, it's good, it's good.
Um, the rest of the questions, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, may I?
Sure. Everything else tailed in comparison to that first one, I love.
Well, except though, no, 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 there's two others that I think are very important. One is, what are the three most important issues you think this new person's going to have to address?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you see, you're going to get different opinions, but it's important that that come out. Would you agree?
I would definitely agree with that.
We have to get that one. I don't see that question.
That's item number two.
Oh, the three goals. Yeah, 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 yeah. Issues, okay.
Yeah. What are the three most important goals? Well, three, I prefer three most important issues that this new person's going to have to address.
So do you want to change that to issues then? So do you want to change that to issues, Sam?
Yes.
Because that's different.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah, it was the same when you were talking about concerns. Concerns is different than that, too.
There's some overlap, but-
Goals are not concerned.
No, goals are not concerned.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, we're not going to do this, though, now.
Oh, we're going to go for the questions.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not doing this anymore. I understand for the profile, but on this part, I think that this part we could go ahead and work and send in.
When are we going to send?
Yeah, you could, yeah, that was what I preferred.
It doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
Easier, you don't have to worry about that.
No order practice, you know? They won't send these, too.
And when will we see the amalgamation of this?
You will see, my goal is to have that back to you by tomorrow.
No, I meant the, all six of these questions.
How soon do we get it?
Tim was first.
April 30th.
April 30th, it says on here, so I want to know.
It'll be after the 30th. It'll be, it'll be probably, it's going to take a while to get all of that together, so I would say that it would be probably about a week after the 30th.
Well, why don't we just get these in by Friday? How does that sound?
I can't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If we get this in within the next couple of days-
I've got mine in.
Monday.
Can't prepare.
The council can get it back to you.
My name's on it, don't lose that.
Okay, yeah.
So on time, yeah, I copied it.
Yeah. When can we get it back?
I think we'll get it back, yeah, within a week.
As soon as you can. I can't say by Monday, honestly.
Could you just email it to him?
Yeah, you email, no, you email it right to Charles.
I asked you if you would email it to me, but just get it in by the 30th.
Yeah. Well, but then, yeah, and sooner than that if you can.
And we want to see it back.
I want to see him back before he starts evaluating candidates, I really do.
That makes sense.
I'm pretty adamant about that.
And she's adamant, boy, you don't get it.
But, no, but let's backtrack. You want to see what now before I start?
Yeah, your amalgamation of all of these six questions that you're going to use against which to evaluate candidates.
Your, from your survey.
From all of them.
Just from us, not the other two's.
No, I wouldn't be able to do that for everyone. If you do it, what you give me, I can take this and get it back to you, you know, if you get it in by the 30th, I can turn it around about two or three days after that. You all can get that.
I would rather wait, guys, until he's got the document against which he's going to evaluate candidates. I don't care about just our piece of it, I care about the final document he's going to use to evaluate candidates.
That would be, no, no, no. What I'm talking about is, I could give you back the profile that you just gave me.
Right.
That I could turn around and get to you within, by Monday for sure.
Yeah.
That's what you're asking for, right?
No, what I'm asking for is, what are you going to do with all these questions?
All those questions, what I was going to do is get all of that in, that's going to eventually be fed to the candidates. Now, what you said before was that you thought it should be with the, you shouldn't make a distinction between the employees and the rest of the staff, right?
Right.
And citizens.
And citizens. That you will get when I give you the notebooks. The notebooks will have that in there, and it'll also have, you know, when we make the decisions of those 14 or 15, at that point in time, you'll be seeing that.
Okay, so you're, but are you going to use this at all? This amalgamation that you put together with our answers, the citizens' answers, and staff's answers, that amalgamation, are you going to use that in determining who those 15 people are that you give to us?
Yes.
And I would like to see it before I see the 15 people.
Well, I think the logistic thing here, Robin, would be, how is he going to, he's got us here, and we know it, and we fill it out, and we get to him, but now he's got to get it to the citizens, and he's got to get it to staff.
He said he was going to do that on the 28th and 29th of this month, it's in the night of next year.
It's going to be compiled anyway.
Yeah.
I think Robin just wants to know if you can forward a copy of this to us before you start using it to meet your own candidates.
Right, yeah.
Just ours.
No, I want all of them.
A memo to council, we don't have, you know, obviously, there aren't names on who did, who said what, but basically, a copy of what you're using as a compilation of all the answers.
Yeah, I, if it's going to be an evaluative tool used, I think we need to know what that tool is before it's used.
Who meets with-
Who meets.
Those conducting employees.
Martin.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I, my understanding of this earlier was that these would be given to the applicants, so that they would have a feeling for the sense of the city.
They compile answers from everybody.
That was my understanding. That was the purpose. It wasn't so much as an evaluative tool, but as something for the candidates. Is that, am I right or not?
No, what was going to happen is that when we get all of the input, and this is a good management tool, okay, they use successfully many, many different times, you get as much information as possible from as many different sources as possible. Then you take that, and you give it to the candidates, and they will then take that and review it and develop, when they develop their plan of action.
Okay.
That was the purpose of this tool.
But you're not using it to evaluate the candidates, to come up with the 15?
I would be using the information that I've gotten as far as the knowledge, skills, and abilities, the E and E, the profile that you just gave me, and that's what I would be using to evaluate the candidates.
Just the answers to this question.
The answer to number one. The answer to number one, we just did, I can see, the rest of this is more of an informative piece.
But what about, will question one be asked of staff and the public?
It's going to be asked of everybody.
Then I want to see it.
Okay, number one, the qualities. What are the qualities? That would be a very interesting piece to have.
The question, the problem becomes, or the question becomes, at what point do you get that? I'm saying you get that when I give you the notebooks.
But she wants to see what you're using as a measuring rod.
If you're using this as an evaluation-
What I would be using is, as I indicated to you before, the E and E, as well as that profile.
Will you be sending it along with that?
Okay.
Yeah, that I can give to you within a day or two.
You don't have it from the public and staff. And if that's going to be part of the profile, I want the whole thing.
Hey, if you just put that-
You're the managers, okay? You're the decision-makers. We have a timeframe that's going, you're giving me what you need, you're also going to be, we're going to be getting input from much more, I don't know what you, you know, you keep bringing up, well, Mercer did this, Mercer did that. I don't believe anyone has had a process that's going to involve and have as many different options in it, and it's what I'm giving you, to get input.
Well, I think, I do think, though, if you can just, I think all we're looking for is a memo, memo and attachment, every part, yeah.
Well, that's what I keep saying, I'm going to give that to you, and I'll give that to you, yeah. But then, if you talk about that you want to wait until you get it from the staff, you know, we've got to get the posting out there and start.
It's simply a communication. This is what I have compiled, you can email it into City Manager's office, and then we'll get to us. But I think what Councilwoman Felton made is saying, is we'd like to see a copy of that as soon as you're done putting it together.
And I agree with you, and I could do that, and I will get it to you. And I can do that, you know, hopefully by Monday or so.
Well, that, that, well, she, I think we're looking for the complete, with all of the answers from the public and from the staff, so that's going to take a few weeks, we understand that, but as soon as you've had all your interviews, and your team has had the opportunity to organize it, and you're ready to use it, then just give us a copy through the City Manager's office, and he'll make sure that we get it.
That's doable, I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That can be done.
Just have a question that we get, it's a done deal, because that piece is a communication piece to all the candidates, so they see a cross-section of everything, not just what we're saying, they're not going to know who it comes from. So we can see it, but at that point, it's a done deal, it is what it is, we give them all the information. I don't think at that point we're coming together to change anything, but I think what you're saying, we just want to see it, but it's a compilation. It's information. It's not to change.
It's not evaluation.
It's not. It's information, and I think we are getting, like you said, more than we've used in the past, they're getting information from citizens, from us, from staff, it's a compilation, I think it's a good tool.
But I think it's before it's used, we deserve to see it.
I would say to this council, Mr. Block, that the rule of thumb here is you can't possibly give us too much information. If you get something, if you think would be of interest to us, give it to us.
I don't have any problem doing that, but what I do have a problem with is that if you're saying, don't do this until we have, oh, that-
I don't think that's what I said.
We're good with the timeframe, just-
Okay, good, I follow that.
One minor thing, I just want to point out, is the, you have here that the general fund budget is $152.8 billion, that's the total budget.
Okay, total budget, okay, all right.
Good money.
Uh, Councilwoman.
That one I was kind of concerned with, is if I had that right, so it's the total budget, yeah.
Total. Who does fact-check? Oh, we all do, okay. I'd like to have a fact-check from our number one actually.
Oh, to look at it.
Yeah.
Charles, I guess it's just, since we went around the room and talked about that profile, it would be my hope that some of that information made its way into that job application. You didn't have that before you met with us, but we've shared some information, I know you're going to revise the application, all three versions of it, and I just would, it would be my hope to see some of those qualities high in the-
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. All right.
Yes, what?
Probably no public comments.
Exactly, we need to see if anybody back here wants to make, do any of you want to make any comments? Okay, no public comments, and I guess at this point, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.